Welcome to the Bothell City Council Meeting of October 9th, 2018. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe, yeah, we're all here. All council members are here. Is there any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? Nope. Okay. Visitor comment? I don't have any sign up sheets. Clerk, do you have any? Oh, there's some interest. Okay. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion either directly or through a member of the council without the permission of the mayor. And I don't know your names, so go ahead and give your name.
Members of the council, my name is John Sandbrook. I live at 11227 Northeast 128th Street, Unit I-102, in Kirkland, Washington, 98034. I've spoken to you before about non-consensual forced genital cutting of healthy male infants and neonates. It is likely that you know the issue by the euphemism circumcision. Let me be clear. Circumcision wounds an infant and the man he will become for life. It also wounds the people he interacts with over the whole course of his life. Circumcision is the perfect mind virus. It survives generation after generation because of the myths that surround it and the individuals who have been victimized by it and wish to forget the damage it did. I've been presenting this issue to the Board of Commissioners of Evergreen Health. Evergreen performs non-medically indicated forced genital cutting on healthy male infants and neonates when parents request it. Evergreen justifies offering this harm by pointing to the American Academy of Pediatrics Circumcision Policy Statement of 2012. The statement claims that circumcision has benefits but not enough to recommend it universally. Parents may request it, however, and if they do, then the AAP suggests that their request be honored. Did you catch the eye wink between the AAP and the clinicians that profit from selling this unnecessary operation? A couple of quick points regarding the policy statement. First, it is an epistemological train wreck. The statement has been criticized by medical organizations around the world. It is the worst kind of flawed science, and it would fall quickly under the scrutiny of even a seventh grade debate team. Second, the statement expired in August of 2017, yet Evergreen Health continues to rely on it. They have no valid justification for what they are doing. In closing, it is time for us to work this issue. I will be contacting each of you, requesting a meeting to discuss this. Genital mutilation is a scourge that has been wandering the earth for thousands of years. Please, join me in dragging this issue out of the darkness and into the light, and then working with me to end it once and for all, so that all babies are able to keep their whole bodies. Thank you for hearing my concern.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to provide public comment? Go once, twice. Okay. Moving on to the study session, AB 18-146, which is the 2019-2020 Budget Study Session, and I believe we have the city manager to give a presentation.
I do. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, the purpose of tonight is to provide you with your first review of the initial proposed budget. So each department will be presenting their budgets along with the judicial branch. We have them divided up into two evenings. This evening, I'd like to start with an overview of the budget to give you sort of a sense of the process that occurs as we put the budget together. I want to talk a little bit about the funds and just how generally budgeting works, and I'm hopeful that that overview will help you understand all the work that's been occurring most of this year and how we got to the place that we are. Once the departments have presented their budgets, at the end of next week, October 16th, there will be a discussion about options for moving forward and balancing the 1920 budget. And I look forward to having that discussion with you and receiving guidance moving forward so we can put the final budget together. So what you have in front of you is all of the slides. It's an opportunity for you to sort of have general information. This is a, we're doing this in a study session, so to really encourage communication and questions, I would encourage that you ask in the middle of presentations, because this is really meaty information, and the department heads and I, we know our information well. Again, we're in the budget preparation process, so not every number's going to tick and tie. I already found some typos in my presentation, and so what we're trying to do is really have the opportunity to have a conversation with you and help you understand where we are today so that we can move forward. But I'm hopeful that you feel comfortable at any time asking questions as all of us are making our presentations. So again, this is a study session that'll be broken up into two evenings. Day one is today, so we're going to have this budget overview that I'll provide to the council. We'll have department reviews, and those include the administrative departments, the fire department, and public works. If you have questions that we are not able to answer tonight, we'll keep a list of those and bring our responses back at the beginning of the evening of the 16th, so that we can continue the conversation and provide you with the information that you need. At the end of the 16th, if you have questions that we aren't able to answer, I can follow up with those either by email, or we can answer those on October 30th, when we bring you the proposed budget. So moving along, so starting with what this is going to look like. As the departments present their budgets, we formatted all the department budgets. I'm on page four. I'm on page four. The departments are going to be presenting general information about their budgets and organizational charts. We're going to talk about our accomplishments and efficiencies that we did for 1718. Talk a little bit about areas of focus and service delivery, so you and the community understand what each of these departments do, what they're focused on, and the services they're delivering to our community. We also want to talk to you about emerging issues, things that are facing us, that are impacting our budgets and our abilities to deliver the services for the community. There were additional needs that were included in this year's budget. We were very careful and thoughtful about what we included, to be thoughtful about the resources that we have available, the revenues, and really what keeps the machine running, and focused on some other criteria that I'm going to go through. We also wanted to highlight this year, the information services and facilities requests that are coming from the departments. Those are requests that come from each department, but then fall within either the IS budget or the facilities budget, but we wanted each department to talk about their requests, because that's where the ownership lies, and so it would be coming, the request actually comes from the department, and you'd have the opportunity to ask the department about their IS and facilities needs. Almost every department's going to have a list of additional unfunded needs, and these were items that we felt were important but just didn't make the budget, and now are sitting on an unfunded list. But I wanted you to understand the number of things that are still needed and that we feel are important for our service delivery, so that you have a sense of what those lists look like. We have a quick chart of expenditures by category and expenditures by fund, and then with each department, we've provided you detailed expenditures by category data sheets, and we're hoping that gives you some sense of where the budgeting is, where the expenses are, and we're happy to answer questions tonight as we go through those, and you'll see those again when we come back to you on October 30th. Again, this is really an opportunity for the council to ask questions, ask for additional info, if there's things that we're talking about that maybe you'd like to have additional information about, how much does that service cost, why are we providing that service, maybe things that aren't in the budget that you would like to see us consider and maybe price out for you, and really understand what's included and what's not included. And when we talk at the end of October 16th, part of what I'm looking for is, did we get the right things in and are the right things not funded? And so you may find things on the unfunded list that are really important to you, and it would be helpful to highlight those and then have the discussion on the 16th to say, you didn't include this in the budget, but this is really a priority. Is there a way to include this in? And so I'm hopeful that those, that feedback that we can get from you as well. Onto page five. One of the commitments that I made to you when we met in September, no, it was early October, I think, was a recap of the 1718 budget. So I'd like to sort of go back in history. So in October, in December 2016, the council adopted a balanced budget. You must do that by law, and you did. I wrote, when I started in January, based on talking with staff and better understanding the budget that had just been adopted by the city council, I wrote a cover letter on top of the interim city manager's budget letter, and that cover letter noted some challenges that hadn't been addressed in the 1718 budget and really needed to be addressed either in the coming years or in this budget. And there's the list in front of you under "challenges noted." If you go to the next page, under page six, you'll see in red, those are the six items that we haven't dealt with yet. So reinstatement of the general fund and asset replacement funds, fund reserves, environmental contamination cleanups, the O&amp;M for the Wayne property, securing more open space in North Bothell, and the need for economic development. These all came from the council, and we have not been able to address these in 1718, nor we're struggling to address them in 1920 as well. The two in blue that I highlighted, those are currently part of the public safety levy, and we look forward to hearing the outcome of the November vote to understand the impacts, whether these pass or not, and the impacts on our operating and capital budgets. On page seven, so again, a recap for 1718. Some of the challenges that we had had to do with revenues. People keep asking, well, how did we get here? How did we get, when I made the presentation, we had a $3.2 million deficit for the 1718 budget, and the question was, well, how did we get here? And so for 1718, there were some revenues that we were impacted by. The interim city manager, as I explained in my budget presentation, had put in about $600,000 in speculative revenues that haven't come to fruition, so we're about $600,000 short there. And then we had about $800,000 in unexpected tax refunds, having to do with cell phones and other refunds that we were required to give back, again, at no fault of the city. Those are things that just happen in the utility world, and so we were required to give those funds back. There's also longer-term impacts, and I want to be sure that the council and the community understands that I am not making any judgment decisions or any judgment comments when I'm going over these long-term facts. I'm stating facts that occurred in the past, and this is how this community made decisions over the last 10 and 20 years. So first off, for a period during the recession, the 1% property tax increase was passed over for six years, and it was also not banked, as it would have been allowed to do. In total, that results in a loss of revenue of $4.2 million annually, and so that's one of the things that got us to where we are today. Another factor is the land use focus in this community. We are a bedroom residential community, and the land use focus has been on residential and smaller retail. And over the decades, decisions were made to focus on those residential and retail options rather than big box, and those things limited our retail sales. Again, I'm not making a judgment decision. This is a wonderful community, but ultimately, those things impact on how we got where we are today. And there was also limited review and consideration of other revenue sources. There are other cities around us that have a BNO tax and have other taxes, and we didn't do those things. And so as cumulative, as you start to look at the cost of services, those are the things that are impacting our budget and the ability to deliver the level of service that this community would like to have, but we have limited revenue to be able to do that as our cost of services continue to increase. The expenses in the 1718 budget were impacted again. About $300,000 were taken out of the budget by the interim city manager that absolutely needed to be in, so that's almost $1 million that we started the year off basically unbalanced in the budget that you adopted for 1718. We had about $1.2 million in retroactive pay for labor contracts. We were out of contract when I got here with our labor unions. We have an additional $500,000 for environmental cleanup for the city-owned properties downtown, so those properties continue to be very challenging for us, and the cost of cleanup is really exceeding what we thought it would be as is the time, and we're still not done, and that's one of our challenges ahead. And public safety personnel and overtime costs have exceeded budget, and we've talked a lot about that in recent months, and it's one of the reasons the council put on the public safety levy. The level of staffing that we currently have is inadequate, and so our overtime costs are just exceeding basically what we budgeted. There's also some ongoing expenses that have longer-term impacts. The asset replacement fund continues to be underfunded, and so when things are underfunded and we don't have the monies to replace certain assets, we have to pay for those out of the general fund ongoing revenues. The property proceeds have not been available to pay for the city hall lease, so part of the financing strategy for this building was to sell the downtown properties and for at least the first eight to 10 years, pay for the lease of this building, which is $3.2 million, through the proceeds of the sale of those properties. There are several properties that remain unsold, three of which are part of the contamination challenges that we're having. During the Great Recession, our services were basically not reduced. This was very unique throughout the United States. Many, many, many cities and counties looked at the level of service that they were able to afford during the Great Recession and did some significant cutbacks and also eliminated staff, reduced staff, and this organization chose not to do that, but that is having an impact in our ability to fund the services that we have. Just like the police department has talked about and the fire department, demand for and complexity of services continues to increase. Things are not as simple as they used to be, and so it's just costing us more time, more resources to be able to deliver the services that we're delivering to our community. And always the famous unfunded state mandates. The state decides that there are important things for the state of Washington to have, and they pass legislation, but they don't give us the funding to be able to implement those mandates, and so we continue, cities continue to struggle. This is a nationwide challenge. We understand what the state's trying to accomplish, but it's very hard to push these unfunded mandates onto local communities and expect them to deliver and meet those laws without any additional funding. So when I talked to the council on the, about the sixth quarter quarterly budget status report, we talked about the general fund reserve. During the Great, prior to the Great Recession, our general fund, which was in 2007, was at $15 million. By 2015-16, our ending general fund reserve was $3.3 million. That's one of the ways we made it through the Great Recession without eliminating staff or reducing staff and reducing services. Those were choices that were made, so we depleted a lot of our general fund reserve. That's about, if we're at a $3.3 million general fund reserve, that's about 27 or 25 days of expenses. It's about a 7% general fund reserve. If you look at best practices for an operating reserve, GFOA generally recommends about two months, but it also recommends that you do a community assessment and determine if you have additional risks, that you might want to get that general fund reserve up even higher, but a minimum of two months is best practices. There was a report that was done, a third quarter report, that estimated if spending was going to continue, that by the end of 2017, our general fund reserve was going to be at $1.6 million. Obviously, this is well below best practices and impacts our ability to have a good credit rating, and so as a result, $8.7 million was transferred from the capital fund, from the remaining monies that we had available, from the proceeds from the sale of the downtown properties, that was moved into the general fund. So instead of being at $1.6 million at the end of 17, our ending general fund reserve was $9 million, and so that's about 18%. So we're still not quite at the two months, but we were certainly in a much better place. When I delivered the sixth quarter quarterly report, we had a projected general fund deficit of $3.2 million, reducing our general fund reserve to 5.8 million and at 12%, so we weren't making good progress. What I promised the council was, and I had just received that information and presented it to the council with very little time, to really analyze why we were there, how we got there, and what we could do to make changes, and my commitment to the council was, the next month that I would spend time doing that. And working with this team, we were able to turn that around. So at this point, what we are projecting is an additional $1.5 million towards the general fund reserve and ending 2018 with $10.5 million in our general fund. But I do want to be clear, you still, we still overspent. We overspent by about $1 million. So we didn't quite fix all the structural deficit that we experienced, or the overspending that we experienced in 1718. We did that in a lot of different ways to fill that budget gap. We transferred money from the street fund, suspended money from the street fund back to the general fund. The general fund was supporting the street fund. We used $500,000 in REIT money, which is the real estate excise tax monies, to pay the city hall lease instead of the general fund. We transferred some remaining monies from the GO bond, from the police station, back into the general fund. We put on a hiring chill. We identified some litigation monies that were being paid for through the general fund that should have been paid for by stormwater. We really took a look at our traffic impact fees and looked at the opportunities to use those for capital projects instead of REIT or general fund. We also relooked at our revenue projections. They had been done in the March-April timeframe, hadn't really been updated, and so, as you all know, the economy continues to motor along, and so we're able to adjust those projections.
Can I just clarify? I know the answer to this, but we have audience members who don't. Can you clarify the street fund is not safe streets and sidewalks levy money?
The street fund is safe streets and sidewalks money, but the million that was transferred out was an additional support mechanism for, so it's, that was general fund money that was a commitment, that was provided to the streets fund when things were really struggling. And so because assessed value has continued to increase and projections are exceeding, or revenues are exceeding projections, at this point, we're able to suspend the contribution of the general fund into the street fund, because we're able to deliver the projects we've committed to deliver with the levy money.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, so nobody thought it was coming out of safe streets and sidewalks levy money?
That would, thank you very much for the clarification. The overall key message through all of this, that the council needs to understand, is we did a lot of this balancing by using monies that will be, that were intended to be used for future capital projects. All of this is done legally, it's done within accounting standards, it's a different way of looking at how we use money, how we hold future money for future projects, but we have a need today, and working collaboratively with the team, we were able to do what we needed to do to balance our 1718 budget. But as we look ahead, we will have a more limited, we will have more limited options of capital projects that we can do, because we had to shore up the 1718 budget. But we will, we will end the year balanced, we will use part of the monies that we transferred over. The $8.7 million was intended to bolster up the general fund, and you are using money out of those property proceeds to balance an ongoing budget deficit. So please understand that it's, we're still not, everything's not great. We still overspent, but it's much, much better than projected. And to show you what that looks like for the general fund reserve, if you look on the next page, it's page 12, there's a general fund budget summary, and I always find this really to be helpful. So if you look at when we ended the fiscal year 1516, I talked about the fact that you had $3.3 million in the general fund reserve. The amount of total revenues coming in, plus the transfers in, and you can see the $8.7 million that was transferred in from the property proceeds, that means total revenues were $108 million. You can see what we spent. We spent $100 million, plus $100 million, a little over, so our surplus is $7.2 million. So you spent money, we spent money out of those property proceeds, so this chart really shows you that. We now have $10.5 million we're projecting at the end of 1718, and that is about a 20% general fund reserve. Now, it's not as high as it was before the recession. We were at $15 million, but one of the council directions has been to rebuild that reserve so that we have adequate reserves, especially for our credit ratings, but also in the event of any emergencies. So hopefully, that chart is helpful to kind of see how we got to where we are and what we were projecting to end up. So that was my committed follow-up on 1718. So I'd like to move now into the 1920 proposed budget. What I'm going to walk you through is sort of how we put the budget together, our budget process, some financial policies. I want to talk just briefly about our investment portfolio and our debt capacity, and obviously the council goals play into this process as well. So on page 14, our strategic alignment. I thought this might be helpful to understand sort of how the budget process starts. We don't just sit down and look at a bunch of numbers and sort of figure out how to make the budget work, and then put in a bunch of numbers and come before council. There's actually a very strategic process that happens. So it all really starts with the comprehensive plan. That is the guiding document of the future of Bothell. That's the purpose of the comprehensive plan. It really lays out where a community wants to go, and we use that then to develop master plans. That's sort of our marching orders. That's where the community would like to see Bothell go. Then the master plans work from that. That's our source of information. We understand where the community would like to go, and we develop master plans, things like the downtown sub-area plan, the housing strategy, the capital facilities plan. Then we get the council goals. So then you say, okay, here's this whole list of things that the community would like us to accomplish, but for the coming two years, here are our specific goals we'd like you to work on. From that then, we develop the budget. So we take all that information and we say, what's really important to the council? What are the guidelines? What are these strategic plans telling us? What does the comp plan tell us? And we use those to help us put the budget together. And then we come back and we implement the budget once it's adopted, and we do some regular reporting, and those reporting look, there's many, but some examples would be the council goal scorecard that we deliver to you on a quarterly basis, the quarterly budget status report, and basically the daily delivery of programs, projects, and services, many of which you see on your council agendas. Our budget process here in Bothell starts pretty much in the April-March-April timeframe. So again, we had a workshop in April with the council, and you identified your goals for 1920, and we talked about your priorities. We spent the day together. We then take that information and we start putting the budgets together, and it's sort of a circular process, as you can see. We project revenues, we prepare expenses, we look at the CFP, so March through September, we're doing all of this. There's a review for me, where each of the departments come and meet with me, with the finance team, and they go through their budgets, and we talk about what's in their budgets. And then finally, we have a review at the executive level, and we all sat around for four and a half hours and talked about each other's budgets, and were in agreement about what was in and what was out, and our approach to this 1920 budget. So I want you to know that we all are working together to make sure what we're presenting works for the entire organization, and that we believe we've done the best that we can in putting in the expenses that we think will move the organization forward based on your direction. Now we come to council review, so here we are. It's October 9th, and then also the 16th. We are presenting this draft proposed budget. We're looking for direction, and then on October 30th, we're going to come back with the initial proposed budget for your review and consideration and further direction. In November, November 27th, we'll bring you the final proposed budget. You can adopt it that evening. We can continue that, and we can work on it all the way through December, but it must be adopted and balanced by the end of December by law. We follow specific financial policies, and for years, they've been included in the budget, but I wanted to highlight them, because not all of us always read the budget document, and I thought some of these things were really interesting. So first of all, the budget was established by the Bothell Municipal Code, and it's pursuant to the RCWs in the state of Washington. The RCWs also set forth budget milestones that we must meet as part of this budget preparation process. The biennial budget includes financial policies that have been in there for many years, but I wanted to kind of bring them out to light. So these are the kinds of policies that we follow, so when the council adopts the biennial budget each year, or each, every other year, these are the policies that you've adopted and that we followed when we put the budget together. So things like fiscal stability, economic development, livability, community connections, and public safety and security. These are your financial policies on how we use our resources within our community and within the budget. On page 17 is a budgeting analysis tool that's also included in the budget, and these are some options and choices and tools that we have available to us as your budget team in how we put the budget together. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean we do all of these things on every line item, or every budget, or every ask, but these are things that we go through, so you understand sort of the process of our thought process of how we put the budget together. So we ask ourselves things like, is this service mandated by law? And we've talked many times about the machine, and how many things we do are mandated by law and that we must do them. Are they aligned with the comp plan and council goals? Does it alleviate an identified deficiency, something that the city should be providing? Is it life and safety? Costs are in line with benefits, so maybe we're looking at a service, and is it really beneficial and cost-effective for us to provide this service? Can others provide the service? And you're going to hear in the next, this presentation tonight and on the 16th, some of the... of the things that we looked at, that maybe, maybe there's somebody better out there that can provide this service at, at a more efficient cost and is a better provider of that service. We prioritize our finite resources, we have limited resources, we must live within the resources that were provided. And then we look and explore other revenue options, which we'll also be presenting to you on the night of the 16th. So these are your proposed council goals for 2019-2020. These were discussed at the April 2018 workshop that you had, so this is the report out from that workshop. And these are your goals that you've identified. They're not dissimilar from the goals that you had for 1718, but you did make some adjustments. Affordable housing strategy, community and regional connections, economic development, environmental stewardship and sustainability, fiscal responsibility and sustainability, parks, recreation, open space partnerships, public safety strategy, team building, training, organizational development, and technology strategy. On the 16th, we'll be bringing the item before you for you to formally adopt these goals. So if you wanted any changes to these tonight, and on the 16th would be the opportunity for the council to discuss and make any potential changes to your goals before you adopt them. In April, you also gave us some direction and some priorities of, of projects or strategic objectives under those goals. So you wanted us to achieve your council goals and strategic objectives, that was very important to you, and we understand that. You wanted us to retain and increase the general fund reserve, you wanted us to increase the asset replacement fund, it was important for you that we maintain our credit rating, maintain our current levels of service, you wanted us to fund minimum staffing for police, you were interested in Stormwater code enforcement, you wanted to fill the economic development position, add a long-range planner, develop a strategy for possible purchase of shelter in view, you wanted to harness the energy of the community and volunteers, and to be able to enhance environmental sustainability programs. What you'll see in blue are the things that we were able to include in this, in the 1920 budget. So the items that are in black at this point are not included in the, this initial proposed 2019-2020 budget. So you can already see the, the resource challenges that we're having. So it's not that we didn't hear your priorities and your directives, we are just challenged to be able to find the adequate resources to be able to accomplish them. Speaking of challenges, revenues are modestly increasing, personnel costs are impacting expenses. Keep in mind that our service is our people, that's how we deliver the services to the community, it's about people. The cost of services are increasing as they are in the entire region, it's just more expensive to do business here. We're trying to maintain the current level of service, and as I talked about, the demand for service increases, the complexity, complexity of our services continue to increase. We're trying to fully fund the council goals and priorities to the best of our ability. We're trying to identify cost savings and reducing expenditures. We must prepare a balanced budget. The downtown properties contamination remain a challenge for us. To date, we've spent $14 million on contamination and only received $5 million in support from the state. And so clearly, this remains a financial challenge for us. And many department needs could not be funded in this budget, and you're, as I mentioned earlier, you're going to hear from each department and the amount of unfunded needs that, that just couldn't be included in the budget. For our budget strategies with regards to revenue, we want to protect the general fund, so if there's other sources of funds that we can use instead of the general fund, we certainly tried to do that first. We want to confirm the cost recovery strategy for service fees, we're going to be bringing the, the fees to the council on December 4th, and that's your opportunity to confirm that you are still seeking full cost recovery. We want to ensure the proprietary funds are paying their, their full share of costs. So if there's opportunities, very legally, to make sure that those proprietary funds, they, they're, they're set up as proprietary funds because they're, they're businesses and they're supposed to pay for themselves. So we want to be sure that they're doing that, they're paying their overhead and they're paying their way. And so we want, we looked at that as we put the budget together. We want to maximize the Department of Ecology financial support for contamination cleanup. Yes, Mayor?
Could you give us some examples of proprietary funds that need to pay for themselves?
I certainly can, it's things like the Stormwater, the Water and Sewer, LTAC, we have a variety of, of special funds.
Thank you.
And, and I'll go in a little more detail in a little bit. We want to sell the downtown properties. Again, three out of four are contaminated, until that contamination is cleaned up, we cannot sell them, but we want to continue to make that a key focus as it's critical as part of our financial strategy.
So on the downtown properties, from pretty much what I have reviewed over time, while the city is responsible for the cleanup, a, a prospective buyer can have, take on the property and a discount to a rate they could agree to do the cleanup, is that correct?
No.
Pretty much what I've seen in the past is, is.
Two, two of the properties, we have committed with the Department of Ecology to do the cleanup, a third on P-South, that could potentially be the case, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We want to explore other revenue generating options, so we're going to give you options to consider. We're looking at aggressive grant strategies, so this is really important. Last year, we hired, in the current biennium, we hired a grants manager, especially for Parks and Rec, so we're out there aggressively looking for grants, also in Public Works. We continue to, to seek those grants, and we've been very successful, we have very talented individuals doing this, and we can, we want to continue that strategy. And we want to seek state funding, the council approved a lobbyist contract, and so we really want to get to the state and be able to get as much funding as possible for our From a budget strategy, from an expense standpoint, we need to fund the machine. And we've talked about this machine, this is 75, 80% of what we do is a machine that is legally required, there are projects that have been started through either the comp plan, or through council direction, or council goals, that have become part of this machine. And so it's key that those things continue to move forward. So that was one of our main focuses, how do we keep the machine running forward, moving forward? We want to achieve the council goals and your strategic objectives. Again, we want to protect the general fund reserve, and so we were very thoughtful on the things that we're able to afford. We wanted to increase the asset replacement fund, we've not been able to do that in this budget. We want to consider expenses that have a return, and this is hard sometimes, especially in government, but there are things that we can do where we can spend money that save money, or things that we can do that, where we spend money and make money. An example of that will be talked about in the, in the human resources budget, and that's the safety program. That's one of those positions where we spend money initially, but there's an opportunity to save considerable money and also keep our workforce safer. Grants are another example of that. You can, and the lobbyist contract, when you spend money, the rate of return sometimes can be significantly higher than that initial cash outlay, and so we looked at those opportunities as well. We always look for operational efficiencies as we put our budgets together, even in our day-to-day work, we look at ways, could we do this more efficiently? Again, is this something we should be doing? Are there better ways to do it? We want to leverage existing technology, and you're going to hear about this on the 16th. One of the easiest things to do when we need new technology is to go out and look at the fanciest, shiniest package, software packages, because there are some really great ones out there. But what we want to do is we want to leverage the ones that we have. So it may be that it's 80% as good, or 90% as good, and yes, there's a fancier, shinier one out there, but that means you have a whole nother software package, and you need a whole nother analyst to be able to manage those new software packages. When we leverage the ones that we have, we're more efficient and effective, and you'll hear more from that from our IS director. Our technology investments, we look at technology investments that can reduce the need for additional staff. We've come to this tipping point, and council's asked this, this excellent question, where are the efficiencies that are happening when we're making these technology investments? We have grown to the point, from a population standpoint and a demand for service, that our technology enhancements are not going to result in, in staffing cuts. What they result in is, hopefully, the avoidance of additional, requiring additional staff. That's what we're looking for, because our volume of work has increased to the point that even with technology, what we're doing is we're avoiding new costs and additional costs. And we'll talk about that more on the 16th. However, the more technology we bring in, ultimately, that burden shifts to the IS department. So just getting lots of IT doesn't result in savings overall. At some point, there's a tipping point with so many packages and so many devices that IT then has to grow to manage all of our IT needs. The one thing we did do in this budget, because it's a council goal, is we funded training, and we also funded interns. This is an excellent rate of return for this organization. Between the UW-Bothell and UW, we have some incredibly talented young people who can come into this organization and do internships, and quite frankly, they're one of the best deals going. And so we wanted to be sure, to support our next generation, we want young people to see local government and, and commit a career to local government, because it's a fantastic place to work, and if we don't bring them in and we don't show them what local government looks like, we're going to lose them to the private sector where they can make a lot more money. But we want to show them how great local government is, so we're committed to our next generation. On page 23, I thought it would be helpful as we talk about why we're, why, why are we where we are? And we called a couple of local communities around us, and so you can see Woodinville, Shoreline, Linwood, and Kenmore. How are they doing this, this, as they're putting their 20, 1920, 2020 budgets together? Woodinville is balanced, because they have a very strong sales tax base, and they did reduce services during the recession. Shoreline is balanced, because they've added significant new revenue sources, they've gone out repeatedly to their, to their voters since 2010 to support the level of service that they provide to their community. Linwood is balanced, because again, they have a very strong sales tax base, and they reduced services during the recession. Kenmore, which is much more similar in a bedroom community like we are, they're facing challenges. They don't have a strong sales tax base, they didn't really reduce services, and they are considering new revenue sources to be able to balance their budget. So I thought that might be helpful, sometimes when you know what others are facing and why, sometimes it's helpful to have that information. And very briefly, I just thought it would be interesting, as we're talking about finances, to talk about the investment portfolio. So the city does have a $40 million investment portfolio, we have an investment policy, and we are allowed to have this investment portfolio by the RCW. We follow very, very strict best practices in our investment portfolio, and that is basically SLY. It is safety, liquidity, and yield. We invest first in, in sureties that are safe, we must stay liquid, and then we look at the possibility of making money. So it's very important that local governments follow that philosophy. We have short-term investments, and we have a long-term investments strategy, and we work the Wells Fargo Security on our investment portfolio. Yeah?
Can you explain the difference between the investment portfolio and operating reserves?
So the investment, so the investment portfolio is, some of the reserves are in the investment portfolio. So we're able to invest those monies, and if you, if you look at actually page 26, so if you skip from 25 to 26, you can see how we put our investments into a portfolio that allows that liquidity. So the monies that you see in the general fund reserve, when I talk about having a $10.5 million general fund reserve, those are part of our investment policy, the reserves from utilities, any of those funds that don't need immediate access, we can put into a longer term. So you can see the longest that we invest is, is 2022. And obviously, the longer we are in an investment, the higher the yield, but that's our third important criteria. When property taxes come in, that's a huge amount of money that comes in, we're able to invest that in a short-term investment, have it earn some money for the city, and then use it as we need it. What's most important is that we manage our cash flow. We must make payroll, we must pay our bills, and so we manage our portfolio to be able to do that.
Thanks, I just, it's obviously a different number, and so I was trying to understand the difference between 40 million and 10, and what, what that's allocated for. Do we use the money that we make on the investment for something, or to fund the asset replacement? I guess I'm trying to understand that.
We make very little money, we make about $100,000 a year.
I assume it's bonds, that's not much.
I know. So we don't make a lot of money on our investments, but, but it's some, so, but again, it's, it has to do with the, the monies that come in, and so it is the general fund reserve, but it's also additional funds that are available, so it's some, we have reserves in our proprietary funds, or our utility funds, so it's all of those things, it's, it's the way we manage our money to the, to the best of our ability to have some return for, for our community.
So for the layperson, it's kind of like their, their savings account?
Yes.
That they put in, take out?
Yes.
Put in, take out? Okay, thanks.
So on page 25, you can see the investments. Again, we follow very strict investments, we have government-sponsored sureties, we do supernaturals, which were just recently added a couple of years ago. Cities weren't allowed to invest in supernaturals, and those are basically like banks that are originally from foreign countries, like let's say Barclays Bank, or, or Deutsche Bank, but have subsidiaries in America. We were not allowed prior to, a couple of years ago, to be able to be part of that investment pool, but they changed the law because, quite frankly, these are stronger organizations, and there were better returns, and so those have now legally been added into local governments' investment portfolios. Municipal bonds, local government investment pool, and then corporate bonds. And then again, on 26, you see our maturity rates, so you can see how conservatively we're managing our investment pool. I also wanted to show you our debt capacity. So the city is allowed to issue debt, we have about a 1.5, we have a 1.5% limit without vote of the people, those are called councilmatic bonds, and then there are opportunities to borrow with the vote of the people, the bond levy, the bond measure that's on the ballot would be an example of that. And currently, we have outstanding debt of $91 million. And our overall debt capacity is 651 million, so you can see we're well below where our debt capacity is. Any questions on that before I move on to the next section? Okay, so we're going to get into the actual budget overview. So first, let's start a little bit with.
Sorry, Jennifer. So should I just ask, I had a few questions, actually. Page number seven, you talked about the six years the property taxes not increased. Do we, do you know what six years that was for?
10 through, 10 through 16, or not?
2008.
2008 through, through 2014.
Okay, 2008 through 2014. And is there, is there a way for us to catch that up, or is, there's no way for us to ever catch that up?
The council at the time would have need to, needed to make the decision that those, that it could have been banked, and they chose not to bank it, so there is no way for us to make that up.
Okay. And then page 11, you talked about the traffic impact fees. How are our levels right now on those traffic impact fees?
I don't have.
Is that something we're going to talk about later?
Not later, today, but I could bring that back. I don't, I don't know if we have fund balances for the traffic impact fees with us tonight? No.
Okay. All right, so you'll, I'll find out about that, we'll find out about that one, okay. And then the cleanups, you had mentioned that we had 14, page 20 mentioned 14 million that we've, that we've paid, and 5 million that we've only received, 5 million. Do we have the potential to receive more funding on that?
We continue to, to seek more, I don't know what the opportunities are to get more funding.
That, I believe that was the transfer to date, so I think we have about 1.7 million, or maybe 2 million, that we've been awarded grants, but we haven't received the reimbursements from yet, so that will go up there. And then we continue to request increases for our remedial action grants for the sites that we've been, we've had underway.
And are we going to, is that 14 million you're going to still increase too, or?
Yes.
It's continuing to increase, okay.
Yeah.
The percentage rate, on page 25 slash 26, you talked about the portfolio rate.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know the percentage of that rate? What, is there a percentage that we earn on our money?
It depends on the, so when you look at the next page, on page 26, it depends on the maturity, so it's anywhere between, I think it's like a half a percent and 3%. So the longer, so that's why there's a little bit of money that, that matures in 2022.
Okay.
That has a slightly higher percentage point that we're earning, and so as you go down, so very little in 2018-19, a little bit more in 2020. If my memory stands right, I want to say it's a half percent to a percent to maybe, I don't think we've been past four, three and a half?
It's three or something like that.
Yeah.
It's on the longer term?
Yes.
Three and a half, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I, I wasn't going to interrupt, but since we're there, could, could you come back and let us know what the outstanding debt is related to, like what, what the numbers are, what, what that debt is?
I don't understand your question.
Well, we have a.
What it's related to?
91.5, but what, what is it related to? Yeah.
Oh, the, yes, absolutely, yeah.
Thanks.
One, one is the City Hall, but.
I assumed that was one of them, but I wondered what the others were.
Okay, yes, we can detail that out.
Thanks.
And Jennifer?
And Jennifer, I have a question. So on page, oh, I'm sorry, let me get my glasses on here. Eight. On page eight, we, it shows that we did $300,000 in unbudgeted but required expenses. And then again, we went to 1.2 million retroactive pay for labor contracts. I'm looking at the, and overtime, and overtime. I look at those three issues and saying, is that something we have to look forward to not incur this kind of expenses in the next budget?
So the, one of the reasons that, so the unbudgeted required expenses, like taking money out of our utility, our electric budget, has been put back in. So we've rectified this. The retroactive, we're trying to stay committed to our timelines with our labor contracts and not get two years out of contract with our labor unions. And we continue, we have the strategy of the over hires. Unfortunately, the police staffing is so low, we just haven't achieved the balance of the over hires yet because we don't, we physically don't have enough officers.
Right, but if the levy passes, then that should take care of this overtime? Because we'll be increasing our police--
Overtime. That we, it's going to take, it takes 18 months to hire an officer. So there's a ramp-up period, and we're so low that we're, we're still going to see overtime.
Okay. And I know, when you look at this budget, you're looking at the three funding sources, which are sales tax, property taxes, and utilities, correct?
The three main.
Mm-hmm, three main. So if we, I guess I want to know from, and you'll tell me this, I'm sure it's coming. I want to know how we are doing with both sales tax and property tax in relation to, you know, the last biennium and then this biennium. And what we could do to really make those grow. Those are important to me.
Okay, that's coming.
Okay. Either you're ahead of me or I'm behind you, I don't know which one.
Any other before I? All right, so we're going to go to page 29. So we're going to look at the economic forecast. So part of putting the budget together is looking where the economy is going, because that impacts our revenue projections. We have to very seriously look at this and determine, especially in a two-year budget, how our revenue is going to come in, what does the economy look like? So we look at national, state, and local. So nationally, from, from what I could read and understand is the US economy is continuing to grow. It's slowing a little bit, but generally, and you can always find a naysayer out there who's doom and gloom, but generally, the reports seem to say that the growth is going to continue. Might slow down a little, but it's going to continue. And, and so we really, we tried to budget within those parameters of understanding that we're, at least for 1920, that there appears to be continued economic growth. Then we looked at Washington State, and we have seen a little bit of slowing. So employment growth has slowed, home sales have slowed slightly, taxable sales growth has increased, so people are still spending. And we did see inflation in June move to 3.6%. And then we looked locally. So the King County economy also continues to grow. There's population growth, there's construction boom still happening, and most of the leading indicators are positive. And these, these are coming from, the Washington and the local are coming from the state of Washington and King County. So I'm relying on other experts to provide me with this information. And so we're, we're projecting modest growth in our, in our revenues based on these, these forecasts for the nation, the state, and the federal, Washington State and local. So all revenues by fund, this just gives you a sense of all the, the categories of revenues that, that we bring in overall. And we'll talk a little bit more about these as we move on, but I just want to kind of give you an overall sense. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the different funds. So the general fund, again, going back to the general fund reserve, this really is the, the city savings account when it comes to the general fund. And the general fund are discretionary monies. But there's something that I want to make sure that the council understands. So as of January 1st, 2018, so at the end of that year, we had a general fund reserve of $9 million. Within the general fund, based on accounting principles, there are categories. There's assigned, restricted, committed, and unrestricted. And so technically, this is where numbers can be so challenging. Technically, when we look at the general fund reserve, we're really supposed to look at the unrestricted amount for our general fund reserve only. But we've been looking at the overall general fund reserve amount. It's not, not really wrong, but it doesn't really tell the whole picture. So within the general fund reserve, I want to make sure that the council understands that by policy, you've committed $1.7 million to a restricted fund that is for future capital infrastructure. So you've got $1.00 million set aside for unexpected capital infrastructure needs. There's also some money set aside from the tourism program. For this is the LTAC Reserve. We have some restricted monies, donations mostly, for police and fire. And then truly, the unrestricted general fund reserve is $6.3 million. You'll find this information in the CAFR. It's, it's not particularly relevant to the budget, but again, I just, when we talk about the general fund reserve, really, it's the unrestricted that is, that is the amount that is to be available in the event of an emergency. And technically, we should be calculating our percentage off of the unrestricted, but we, we are calculating it right now off the entire amount. Does that make sense? Okay.
See, manager, I have a quick question. The 1.7 restricted for future capital infrastructure, you said that's kind of for emergency needs?
Yes.
And that's, that doesn't include water, sewer, stormwater, and that type of stuff? This is just like kind of a road or a building or something like that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So on the .84 million for tourism, I hope to hear how we're getting a return on those dollars. Eventually. Not, it's my money.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And this is the savings account. So the, these monies are not being spent, this is the reserve for that program.
But if it's-- Sorry. If it's a savings account, they can tap into that?
Correct.
For different reasons?
That's correct.
Okay.
Then we move into the capital facilities fund. So this is where the real estate excise tax is put into. And real estate excise tax can only be used for capital, hence it goes into the capital fund. These are, these are volatile revenues because they're based on, they're basically a property transfer tax. And so we put them in capital, and we don't use them as, again, ongoing because it's, it's a, it can be used for capital only. So the council understands in 2019, we're expecting $5.3 million in REIT. And in 2020, we're expecting, projecting $5.8 million. These monies can be used for the City Hall lease. Because it is a capital facility and it's a lease on a capital facility, we can use those monies. And that's one of the ways that we were able to reduce the burden on the general fund in 1718 was by using these REIT monies that had been programmed for other capital projects. We use them to pay the lease payment on this building, and that is, that is a very legal use. And again, we pay $3.2 million a year for the lease payments on this, on the City Hall.
And I guess because I don't understand the property transfer tax, could you explain that a little bit?
So anytime a real property transfers, if someone buys, buys a property, there is a tax that is associated with that. Half a percent goes to Bothell, and I believe a percent and a half or 1, 1.25, I can't remember, goes to the county. So we get a percent of that. And that's, again, so an apartment building could, could transfer, could sell, and that would cause a rise in our, in our REIT monies. The economy could slow down and sales could really come to a screeching halt, and then those monies would go down. So it's, it's a, it's a more volatile revenue source. Each year of the monies that are brought in under REIT, we put aside 10% into an opportunity fund. Right now, we have $1.8 million in that opportunity fund, and those are basically available for certain opportunities. If something were to become available that the council wanted to do, a project, that's what that is for. So there is this opportunity fund. We also keep $1 million, a rolling $1 million in this fund to ensure that any projects that might go over budget, that have been authorized and are underway, if there is some, something happens, there is some overage, there is some unexpected thing that happens as part of that capital project, that monies are available. So there's always this rolling $1 million. So that's the capital fund. And this comes down to the question that the mayor asked earlier, the proprietary funds. And this is a, a list of some examples. So these are proprietary funds, are specific funds, they're restricted uses, and they should function like a business. And they should cover their own expenses. It doesn't mean that the council at some point couldn't make decisions to use general fund monies to support these proprietary funds. However, these proprietary funds can never be used for anything other than the business that they're intended to support. And these are things like the water, the wastewater, the storm, lodging and tourism tax, the impact fees. They're very specific sources of funds for very specific uses.
Sorry. We have impact fees on utilities?
That should have been over. Cut.
Oh, okay. I was like, oh, there's, I didn't know we had--
Okay, that needed a little extra to the left.
I got excited for a minute.
Quality control, double-check editing, missed a few things.
See, manager, I have a question too. The, it's a, it's a slide back on page 34, but the opportunity fund, the 1.8 million, is that, like it's going, that's the total, is that in there now? Or is that like every biennium, or is that every?
That's currently what's in there now.
Okay.
And you have, of that, about 1.2 million has been set aside for the repurchase of the hotel. So those are the types of things we use the opportunity monies for.
Okay, that's, that was going to be my next question, what are the examples? Okay, thanks.
So now we're going to move into the general fund, because that's really the main source of, of how we deliver services aside from the utilities funds, which will be talked about during the Public Works presentation. I want to talk about the general fund. And that's where we experienced the deficit. We've resolved that deficit for 1718. So this is, again, when we talk about looking at the economy and we look at our revenue projections, I wanted to show the council what that looks like. So we have projected revenues in the one column for 1718. I want you to see what our growth assumptions are. We feel that we're being relatively conservative. We don't want to under-budget. We don't want to be too conservative, because this is how we help make the, the budget balance. If we're too conservative, and then certainly, extra monies can come in, but you really need to find that realistic sweet spot. And so we, we believe that we've done that. And so you can see that our main sources of revenue, our property taxes are, and sales tax, and the business utility tax are our main sources of revenues. I'd just like to point out that, that in the next two years, we have not factored in any economic slowdown. So and when I come back to you on the 16th, I am going to show you some scenarios that include maybe a minor recession in 2020, so you can see how that impacts the general fund and our general fund reserve. So you have a sense of, of how quickly things can change, even with some minor changes in, in our economy. But right now, these growth projections are two years of modest growth, with no changes, no recession, no pullback on the economy. So on page 38, our revenue projections. So you can see the difference between what we projected at the, coming for the end of 1718. So this has now been recalculated, and this is what we're projecting to finish 1718 on, not what we budgeted. So we, not the, not the budget, not the budget numbers that you adopted in 16, but are adjusted for 1718. You can see what we're proposing for 1920, the dollar amount change and the percentage change. There's another little typo in here. If you look at intergovernment interest and other, the 57% should have been a negative. And that's the difference between that 8.6 million coming out for the transfer that we did from the property proceeds to bolster up the general fund reserve. So overall, you can see from revenue projections, we're projecting about a 2% increase year over year. And then if you move to page 39, we're going to look at expenditures. So you have the projected expenditures to the end of 201718. So again, not the adopted budget, but what we project. You have the proposed budget, and you can see the percent changes. And overall, we look at a 10% increase in our expenditures from the prior or the current 1718 fiscal year or biennium. So cost of doing business is going up. And keep in mind how many things are not yet included in this budget. So these expenditures are based on many, many things that are not included, including council priorities, council goals, and additional needs that we couldn't find funding for. And we're already up by 10%. So our use of general fund reserve balances, that's one of our indicators of how we're doing. So for the 1920 budget, we are projecting now, so what we're delivering to you today is, is basically $2 million short in revenues to cover the expenses that we've included in the 19 budget. We're slightly over by $250,000 in the 2020 budget. The biennium as a whole is $1.7 million short right now. And so we have expenses that exceed revenues by $1.7 million. So together, we have a gap to fill. And again, keep in mind how many things aren't in this budget already, and that we need to find $1.7 million more. The asset replacement, which is something we've talked a lot about that is not fully funded, these are the shortages in the asset replacement. So we're short $660,000 in 19, and in 2020, we're short about $200,000 for a total shortfall of $873,000 for this biennium. You've also asked, how short is the asset replacement fund? We've talked about that, and the council's asked. And so here are the projections through 2025 of how short we are in our asset replacement. Now again, keep in mind, we don't purchase everything that's scheduled to be repurchased. Sometimes a vehicle lasts longer than we think. Recently, we thought one of the fields needed, one of the turf fields needed to be replaced. And because of the outstanding maintenance of our, of our Parks and Rec crews, they extended the life of that turf field by two years. So we could push that, that million-dollar expenditure out, thank heavens, because we did not have any money set aside for that. And Nick will talk about that during his presentation. So overall, there's, there's some movement that can happen, but what we've programmed to be replaced with the asset replacement fund, you can see that on average, we're short about $1.1 million a year for a total shortfall of about $8 million through 2025. So it kind of gives you a sense how, how underfunded our asset replacement is.
Jennifer, if I could, sorry. And just a lot of information, and I'm sorry, I could go back and look it up, but asset replacement, would you just go over one more time?
Absolutely. What it is, or the, so asset replacement is, anytime the city purchases any capital that has, that needs to be replaced, so vehicles, trucks, computer equipment, those kinds of things, buildings, we want to make sure that we're caring for this building. We have a schedule. We say, okay, we bought this vehicle this year, and we think this vehicle is going to last 10 years. And ideally, we put every year, the amount of that vehicle, the cost to recover, to replace that vehicle in 10 years into the asset replacement fund. The turf fields, $1 million. So if the turf field's going to last 10 years, we should have put $100,000 into asset replacement every year. And then boom, when it needs to be replaced, you've got the $1 million. What happens is, when you don't fully fund your asset replacement, and all of a sudden your field needs to be replaced for safety reasons, you have to come up with $1 million out of, out of your existing ongoing revenue versus having it in your asset replacement. So it's another type of savings account.
Thank you.
Yes.
So do we have a current asset replacement fund, and what's the balance for that?
So it gets, so for the vehicles, the, the, there's a, a formula, there's an allocation that's given out to each of the departments for all the vehicles that they have. So our fleet has done, has done a good job of charging the departments that have the different vehicles to put into it. The, there's other things that, that are coming short. I don't know what the fund balances are, but what I'm saying in, in this slide on basically 42 is, for 19 and 20, we didn't put enough in to replace all the things that we should be replacing in 1920. So whatever fund balance was designated for 1920, we're coming up short. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So then the next page, the general fund budget summary.
Sorry.
No, please don't apologize, that's what this is for.
So when, when would we have planned for that?
Planned for what?
The asset replacement fund. So are we planning for 1920, or we're planning for 2122?
We plan every year.
Okay.
So we should always be contributing. We're, we're not contributing enough money to, so that's why it's in the red. So this year, we should be contributing, there's, there's amounts we should be contributing So this year, we should be contributing, there's amounts we should be contributing to make sure that in future years, there's enough money. And we're short.
So it's almost kind of like putting something in your house in reserves. You constantly put the money in there, so when it comes time to replace it, you have the money to replace it.
Yes, yes. Just like your roof, same thing.
So, again, if I could, so generally, if you were going to replace it, what dollars would you use to do that? Where would you get those, that funding?
From ongoing revenue.
So?
So the monies that come in, that we use for operations, would then have to be allocated. We'd have to include that capital cost. We have some computers in our, in all of our fire trucks. Those didn't get included into the asset replacement fund, into the system, and they absolutely must be replaced this year, and we're gonna pay, basically, out of our ongoing revenues. So those monies then aren't available to deliver services, because we have to buy them this year. And had we put them in the asset replacement fund seven or eight years ago, when they were purchased, we would have been putting money aside. We would have said, they need to be replaced this year, and $120,000 would be available, and we could replace them.
So then, is there a plan to how to get here? So that we don't continue to repeat this?
Well, that's part of balancing the budget. So when you look at the red numbers, those would be contributions that the city would need to make. So the question has been, we keep saying the asset replacement fund is underfunded, so we're already 1.7 in the hole. So if you want to then put money towards asset replacement, we would need to determine a number, and that would be another expense for '1920. And we haven't, we haven't calculated that yet.
Thank you.
So I'm sorry to pile on. What, what, what did you say, just the asset that we needed to replace was what?
Oh, all the computers in the fire trucks.
And you said that we purchased that seven to eight years ago?
Correct. Six, sorry, six.
Six years ago?
They weren't purchased, they were given to us by the county with no replacement funding in place. So now, that they've reached their end of life, the county is not gonna pay to replace them, and we carry that burden.
Okay, so six years ago, should we have planned to put money aside to replace those?
Yeah.
I guess that's the question I'm asking.
Yes.
Okay, so moving forward, when we go through the budget process, when we buy something, we're already planning for the asset replacement of it now, currently. We're doing that on everything we're purchasing now, correct?
No.
No?
We're coming up short. There isn't adequate revenue, we're not fully funding the asset replacement fund. That's why it's in the red.
So we're gonna have more conversation on this asset replacement?
Yes.
Let me make sure, asset replacement, okay.
And the reason, this was a council directive, was to fully fund the asset replacement fund. And so, I want to show you what it's gonna take to be able to do that. So the chart on the next page, the general fund budget summary, so what I want to show you, this is the chart I used earlier. So if we were to move forward with the budget that's been presented, this is just a hypothetical, so you understand the impacts, we expect to end this biennium on December 31, 2018, with a $10.5 million general fund reserve. Currently, we have revenues of about $109 million. We have expenses of about $111 million. So we are overspending by about $1.7 million, which means we would have to take those out of the general fund reserve, dropping the reserve to 8.8 million, dropping it down to 16%. So we need to fix, and again, this is council direction, so I'm showing you what your options are, and what the financial impacts are of where we are today. If we were just to say, we don't want to cut anymore, or maybe you even want to add more expenses, it has an impact on the general fund reserve. That's the only other place. We have estimated revenues to the best of our ability. The only place in the general fund, other than cutting services, adding additional revenue, is taking it out of your savings account, which is your general fund reserve. And this is a chart, so it doesn't look too bad, but it's still, we're at 10.5 million now. It will drop, again, with the proposed budget, so I'm just trying to show you sort of an example of where we are today. It would drop slightly in, by 1.7 in 2019, at the end of 2019, maybe go up slightly in 2020, although you could see what happened in 1718, how many unexpected expenses there were. And all those unexpected expenses come from the general fund reserve. If you remember how many ABs, we said, there is no money, so if the council would like to do this, it will come from the general fund reserve. The lobbyist was that way. There were many staff reports that we said, there aren't, there aren't adequate revenues to cover this. If this is something the council would like to do, it will come from reserves. So you need to keep in mind that those will absolutely happen in 1920. So there's no way this is our spending plan, and we're gonna stay within it. There are always unexpected expenses. This general fund ending balance does not include the asset replacement fund fully funded. It's relatively modest revenue growth with no recession. The council goals are not fully funded. The department needs are not fully funded. However, the property proceeds are also not included. And that's really one of the things we need to talk about, is that is part of the strategy, was selling those properties to be able to make the lease payments on this building. Now, we've worked really hard to cover those with REIT monies, but when we cover them with REIT monies, there isn't money available. We're taking money from your capital projects program. So it's, it's not free money. It's nice that it's not being covered by the general fund for a few years, but those property proceeds are critical to moving forward. And when we sell them, what they sell for, when the contamination is finished, those are all unknowns. So currently, you have four parcels, Lot A, D, E, F, and G, and P South. And none of the revenue are included in this budget, because that is speculative revenue, and I cannot guarantee what those properties will sell for and when. So that is, that is an important placeholder to keep in mind, that those monies at some point will come in, and they would go into the capital plan and/or the general fund reserve. So that's a really big deal, and shouldn't be forgotten. But we're still struggling to be able to deliver a balanced budget at this point. Liam?
So I know you're saying that the property proceeds, the sales, aren't included in here, but is the funding for the contamination cleanup, the expense shown in here?
It's shown in here, but I was recently told that it looks like we may have additional expenses, and it's gonna be more. And so, we need to figure out what those are, and then potentially, when we come back to you, either on the 16th or on the 30th, I don't know when we'll get those final numbers, it could be more. And those come out of the general fund.
Yeah, so that's kind of the caveat is, we need to sell the properties, but we also need to pay to clean them up, so.
Correct.
All right.
Yep.
So you know how I feel about the properties, they need to sell. So we, potentially, we have an opportunity to sell A.
Yes.
We have the opportunity to start to put D on the market, because we've already hired a person. And P South could be sold with a discount for cleanup, correct?
Correct.
That's just what you said. So I just want us all to focus on that kind of piece that I think is important.
She skipped one. So what about EF and G? It's contaminated, and is that, is that the one that requires further cleanup? Or are we just waiting for the, whatever, quarters of clean sampling?
No.
Not clean?
We don't even have the consent decree on EF and G yet.
Ah, okay.
So the bottom line is, we have a structural deficit. Our expenses exceed our revenues, and so, we need to look at opportunities to reduce our expenses or increase our revenues. Included in that are operational efficiencies, we continue to try to do that. Really, this organization is amazing at the efforts that it makes to be efficient, deliver efficient services. There's very, very few additional staffing requests in here, because we just don't have the money at this point. So we really tried to be as frugal and thoughtful with our taxpayers' monies as possible, and to meet as many of the expectations, but I recognize that there are many that we haven't been able to include as of yet. So, any questions on anything that I've been through? Tom? I'm sorry, council member. It's a study session, I don't know if we can go by first names, or?
Tom. So all this is under the assumption that the levy and the bond will pass?
No.
Or not?
So this is, this budget is being put together, thank you for clarifying. This budget is being put together with the existing revenues that we have, and we are, there are, each department will show you the unfunded needs that they have that are being asked for in the levy. If the levy passes, we will do a budget amendment in January, February, and we will incorporate the revenues from the levy into the budget and do an amended budget. Or, I guess we can't amend it till August officially, but we'll work on that. If the levy does not pass, we will come back to you in January, February, and we will need to identify what of the things that were asked for in the levy, what are critically important, and we will have to look for further service cuts, programming cuts, and, and again, potentially look at other revenue sources.
So I noticed, it just came to me, so I apologize. I don't know what chart it was on, but there was an amount of money for fire impact fees. I know there's kind of a, it's not clear to me, I guess I should say, that what can be covered with the fire impact fees? It seems clear, but I'm wondering, are any of those funds available for asset replacement, even a portion of? So fire trucks, like, what do, what can we use it for, then?
The fees will, the fees will come to you on December 4th, and there's very specific uses of what, what those fees can be used for.
You mean, okay. Because it is for capital replacement, but it's expanded service or whatever.
If you want to help me, yes.
So, impact fees are for capacity.
Right.
So fire impact fees, traffic impact fees, park impact fees, it can only pay for additional things. So, for example, if the city decided to purchase an additional fire engine over the engines it currently has, you could use impact fees technically for that. If you were to build an additional lane on a roadway, that's what we use a lot of our traffic impact fees for. So they're not to be used for asset replacement, it's forbidden.
Well, the reason I ask is because I, when we were presented the fire impact fees, the consultant said something about, if you're using it up faster, like, if the, the life of a vehicle is shorter because of added use because of capacity increases, that you could use that? And so, I was wondering if we were doing that, and if it was calculated in there. In addition, I was wondering about the aid car that's currently in the levy, and if that could be paid for with fire impact fees. Do we know?
I believe, I believe so, but yeah, and that additional wear and tear, and maybe the fire chief knows about that, but I'm guessing that's probably, it would
It's a small portion.
You would have to document really well, too.
Yeah, I would, I would think that aid car would be included, because it's a, it's a new, it's an additional aid car, it's not a replacement aid car, so that probably would go under that.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, I saw that amount, and I'm like, well, what are, you know, what are we using it for? What are we able to use it for? So, thanks.
I had one more thing, Jennifer. On page 29, we talked a little bit about the opportunity fund. And I believe in 2019, it's 5.3, and 2020, it'll be 5.7 or 8, I think you mentioned.
Correct.
So does that mean that we will have 530,000 or 570,000 additional dollars in those two years, respectively, which would be somewhere around 1.1 or 1.2 million? Which would mean that the opportunity fund would be closer to 3 million?
That's correct.
And so, can opportunity fund be used to help in any other capacity besides, can it help with our deficit problems?
Again, it's all capital, so you can't, the deficit issues are in the operate, ongoing operating, and not the capital.
So it's because the money's in two different pots, you can't use them?
Correct.
Can't commingle them?
Yep.
Okay, and so, we will have discussions around the use of those opportunity funds throughout this budget cycle?
Yes, they're programmed in the capital facilities plan, which will be brought to you December 4th, 3rd, 4th, for your consideration. So that went through the committee, all the funds are identified, everything's programmed for the, for that, for that period of time in the CFP, so you can see all that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna move on to the first department presentation. If I fumble a little bit, this was unfortunate, our assistant city manager isn't feeling well tonight, and so, I'm gonna step in and take her place, so bear with me. Starting on page 2, under the executive tab, the purpose of the executive department is managing the city well on behalf of the city council and the community it represents, providing services that are more effective when centralized or close to the city manager and council. So there are special projects and things that work better in the city manager's office than sometimes having it out in the organization. And so, this general presentation covers the executive office, the legislative branch, which is the seven of you, and non-departmental, which is a little odd, so we'll talk about non-departmental. You'll see the org chart for the executive department, and then we put in executive department by fund, so you can see we're mostly general funded. However, a couple of our areas, most notably, emergency preparedness and LTAC, do seek grants. Again, it's that aggressive grant. Anytime we can get help with any of our programs, we really try to go after those grants, so that we don't have to use general fund monies for some of those things. Executive by category, this is where it's a little odd, so you see the pie chart, that there's a lot of maintenance and operations, but that has to do with the non-departmental, so let me get to that. And the next one, which is on page 6, you can see how large the non-departmental is versus the executive office, which is more for staffing, the clerk's office, and then the legislative branch. Some high-level accomplishments, we didn't want to bore you, all these things will be in our budget, but we just wanted to share a list, so you can see some, the list of some of the things that we've accomplished in the last two years. We put in a poster of our values, that really, the organization has embraced on page 8, something that's really important to me as your city manager, and something that the organization really feels connected to, and those are organizational values. Some of our emerging issues for the executive office, records management requires related technology, so we continue to be under great strain of how we're supposed to manage our records, and technology can be part of those solutions, so we continue to look for those options. The city's role in communications, how do we effectively communicate in this new digital era, era, by the, through the departments? And there's unofficial channels, how do we connect into those? And so, really looking at how we communicate with our community. We have a growing interest in special events. Bothl's becoming a place, a place to have events, people want to do things here. And we don't have a special events process that really is ready for the magnitude of events and the size of events that we see come in our way, and we're gonna be working on that. Strategies for the effects of slow growth in revenue, so that's one of the things we talk about, is we know a recession's coming. We don't know when, but it will come, and so, we want to be sure that we're ready for that. Demands on LTAC funds, so again, this is one of those proprietary funds, and how do we use those funds effectively? There's a lot of interest in using those funds in a lot of different ways, and we need to take a look at that. Or those are pressures for us. Restrictions on the city uses of funds to communicate needs, and so, how do we effectively do that with some of the restrictions that the state places upon us? Growing natural disaster risks, you've seen what's happening around the United States. We need to be ready, we have an excellent emergency preparedness manager, but these are resources, we have to be ready. Our community expects us to be there for them in the event of a disaster, and so, we need to be prepared for that. Parking and future transportation issues, those are also falling within the executive office, and some of the challenges we see coming ahead. A list of some very basic performance measures, that'll also be in the budget document. And then, moving on to areas of focus for 2019, disposition of the city-owned parcels, it's clearly a priority for the council. Continued records management improvement, intergovernment relations, so the council's very committed to your regional activities. We want to make sure that we're able to support you to the best of our ability. It's very challenging being in two counties, it doubles all the committees that you work on, and we want to do the best we can to support you. Human services support, emergency management, community relations, the arts commission, the LTAC, and special projects will be our areas of focus in the year ahead. So these are the items that were included in the budget. So we have a small ask for, or small item that's included for video editing for our c-. communications, because video is one of the ways to communicate with our community now. People like those short 30-second, 90-second videos. It's one of the most effective ways to communicate. For the Arts Commission, we did increase, so the Tourism Manager is the individual responsible for now the Arts Commission. When we talk about proprietary funds, she was 90% LTAC-funded. When she works on the Arts Commission, she may not be funded by LTAC monies, and so we had to increase the amount of general fund contribution for the Tourism Manager to work with the Arts Commission. And over the two-year period, that's $76,000 additional contribution from the General Fund towards the Arts Commission. And then there's also some programming requests from the General Fund as well, and hopefully some grants that they're working on. Tourism, we have a request for holiday lighting. The LTAC Board would like the city to pay for holiday lighting at $10,000 each year for a total of $20,000. That is actually not in the budget. As we tried to get that number, that gap down, we have it, we have it now as an additional needs request, and seeking direction from the Council whether you'd like the General Fund to pay for those lights, or whether you'd like the LTAC Fund to continue to pay for those lights. Human services, there's dedicated funding. We stayed at the same levels that you are this year. That's $356,000 a year. And the Arch contribution, although the parity study showed that there was a request for additional funding, we kept it funded at the same level and are looking for direction for both the Council's interest in continuing with the, at what level, and continuing with the human services grants, as well as the contribution to Arch. Those are discretionary decisions for the Council.
See, Manager, real quick on that. I recall this last budget, that was kind of unusual, that we did give $50,000 to Arch, or was it 50,000 plus some additional money?
It's not unusual, so there's a, we're part of Arch, which is a regional coalition for housing. We've been a member for many years, and there's a, the dues that we have to be, to pay to be a part of that group. In addition, they started a parity program where each member can put in a certain amount towards affordable housing projects. And what that does is it, is it funds affordable housing projects in the region. So, Bothl may be putting in money, and it may fund an affordable housing project in Bellevue, or in Mercer Island, or somewhere else. And the thought is, is that the key to Arch is getting affordable housing for our region. At some point, hopefully, there's an opportunity for Bothl to have Arch support for an affordable housing project, and then something, then those monies would come our way. And that's the point behind the parity. And each year now, the Arch Board does a parity study, and there's an amount of money that's recommended. It's a range, and the $50,000 is under the range that's recommended for '19 and '20.
What was the range that they recommended for us? Do you know?
I have that in, it'll be coming on the 16th. I don't remember off the top of my head. It was, it was like 125 to 250 or something? Comes to mind, something like that. But we left it at the amount that you had approved last year.
And that was a watershed year, if you will, for us contributing to that account? 50,000, or what was it before that?
I don't think that you contributed to the Arch Parity Fund prior to that.
Okay. So, zero. Okay. Thanks.
Our information services and facility requests, two of these items actually got removed, again, trying to reduce that shortfall that we have in the General Fund. So, we did include the digital signature, which will make, if you've ever done any loans recently, there's the DocuSign. It's really the way documents are going today. When the Council approves a contract, staff has to take that contract, they have to prepare it, they mail it out to the contractor, we have to follow up, make sure the consultant or the contractor signs it. It comes back in paper, then we sign it. The DocuSign would basically be just like a home loan that would go out electronically. They could sign it, I sign it, and it's much, much simpler. So, again, when we look at efficiencies, we thought this was a worthwhile investment. And the other is a Civic Plus upgrade, and this is for the website. The other two, the Agenda Management System and the Social Media Archiving, we've pulled from the budget and put into unfunded additional needs, because there just isn't adequate funding at this time.
On the digital signature, that's just contracts, or is that other documents that we do?
It's mostly contracts, but it could be other documents. The contracts are the bulk of what we're sending out and need signatures for.
Okay. And the contracts would be for like, projects that we're doing? Utility projects, things like that?
All the projects, yep. All the contracts that we do.
So, is that a cost of doing business that can be part of fees or anything like that that are charged? Or does that have to fall under? Do you know where I'm going with that?
Yeah, we could certainly, I mean, as part of a fee study, but I don't know what, I don't know what service, it would be tough to pass on, but it doesn't mean we can't look at it. And then the list of unfunded additional needs, we thought it was important to do a community survey. You had one funded in 1718. We think it's really an important way of connecting with our community and understanding whether we're accomplishing things and focusing on the areas that we should be and that they're interested in, and it helps the Council put their goals together, but that, there was inadequate funding for that. The lobbyist contract, and this is very important, we use general fund reserves for '18. If you're happy with the lobbyist contract, and these are generally multi-year relationships, we did not include funding in '18 and '19 to continue the lobbyist contract. So, we would need direction on how you would like to fund that. We did not increase the human services per capita funding. Oh, here it is. It's right here. The Arch General Fund Contribution, so it would be an additional $157,000 per year, so $314,000, we didn't include that for the parity. When this building was built, there was hope that the EOC could be in the City Hall. If you've ever been to our EOC, it's actually in the police building. It's the, a training room, so it's done with an amphitheater style, and it is extremely awkward and really a not acceptable place to have an EOC.
Can you explain what the EOC is?
It's an Emergency Operations Center, or we call it ECC here, Emergency Communication Center. And in the event of an emergency, it's what we activate to be able to effectively respond to an incident. We had hoped to have it here. To have it here, you have to have a generator. You have to have power. And so, to be able to do that, we would need a $250,000 generator attached to this building to make this our ECC. And then some other things, support for community events, and some software things. We didn't know the pricing, but we also didn't include those. So, in addition to the 40-
Sorry, mid-sentence.
It's okay.
There's a huge generator down in that garage. What is that thing plugged into?
I don't know, but it's not, doesn't, it's not for this, I don't know.
When it turns on, you know it.
Yeah. It's very limited, emergency lighting and that sort of thing, we have done, we are working and looking and seeing what additional capacity it has to see at the very least if we can keep the lights on down here. But, for example, it doesn't cover HVAC, which is a big power draw, and yeah, so we would need something much larger.
That thing's huge. Okay. Maybe two of those or something.
That's not huge.
It does cover most of the IS functionality, so it's the ability to keep the phones up, the network switches up, and some of that information.
Does it keep the servers cool?
No, because we hold those at PD, but we have smaller rooms here called IDF and MDF, so that's basically all it's doing in emergency lighting. It is size-wise, I mean, it's very small for what this building is, so.
Okay. Thanks.
So, if I'm looking at 2019, and the total is almost 300,000, then if I look at 2020, it goes up to about 500,000. So, if we stayed at the 2019 level, that would be one way of actually saving some dollars, correct?
These are not included in the budget.
They are not. None of them. Unfunded, sorry.
Yep. Yep.
I see it.
So, if you include the two software packages that we took out, it's $840,000 of unmet needs just for the Executive Office.
Gotcha.
The Legislative Office, most notably what, the increase for the Legislative Office is, you've noticed that we now are required by WCIA to have a security officer in the lobby anytime we have a public meeting. So, the biggest increase to your budget was $24,000 for the two years to have security out here for all of our Council meetings. Moving into non-departmental, so this is, basically, it's, it's a, it's a fund or a budget that, it sort of keeps things that are, don't really fit in any one department, so it's sort of this conglomerate of things, and you can see the list before you. So, it's a little bit odd that way, but that's what the non-departmental is, and the list of items that fall within that. And then behind that, and you'll see this with every department, is we provided you with detail sheets then, and so you have the opportunity to take a look at what was budgeted in 1718, what our modified budget is based on our projections for both, for all of our expenditures. You can see the budget request that's currently before you, the increase and decrease by amount and percentage, and then we tried to provide some comments. If there were certain increases or certain things changed, we provide, tried to provide you with comments. I thought it was interesting, when you look at the City Manager's budget, many of the department budgets are going up, and the only reason the City Manager's budget was to be able to stay basically within the same amount is we eliminated a full position. So, that shows you the amount, the costs that are going up to deliver the services, it actually took a full person, the elimination of a full position, to be able to balance and have pretty much the same budget for the Executive Office that we had in 1718.
I have a question about the recycling and the non-departmental. That's a dedicated revenue, right? It's like a utility?
It isn't entirely. We have some revenues coming in from the hauler for administration of the contract, and then we have some grants that help fund the sustainability aspects, but there is some general funded staff there.
Wow. Okay. Thanks.
Just a bit.
So, as you go through the different sheets, you can see each of the areas within the executive. So, there's the City Manager's budget, there's the PIO. City Manager's budget is mostly general fund. The PIO budget is mostly general fund, or is general fund. The emergency preparedness, you'll see some changes and some increases in here. This was moved into the City Manager's Office a couple months after I arrived at the city, and quite frankly, the increases in this budget, it was not properly funded. And there were things that weren't included that needed to be included, along with the reclassification of the manager in charge of that program. So, you'll see some increases in that, in that critically important program. There's the City Clerk's budget, that's also general funded. The Legislative Budget, that's also general funded. We have the Customer Service Center, so this was created in 2017. That's the staff that work right here and welcome individuals and provide a lot of support services, and are, we're really growing that desk and trying to use it as efficiently as possible. And then you'll see the recycling sustainability programs, the tourism program, that is LTAC-funded, and you can see that 70%, there was a reduction of the tourism coordinator or manager because that's now general funded. And then you have the Arts Commission, and you see the cost of the Arts Commission, and then the human services, memberships, human services, again, all general funded. So, that's a lot of data, so it gives you the chance over the next week or so to take a look at some of those things, and we're happy to respond to questions if you want to send them during the week, and we can follow up, or you can ask them at the beginning of the study session on the 16th. Councilmember McCullough?
And this may be something to think about, only because, as a businessperson, when I get into the Rad, I know what I have to do. And I have to either consolidate jobs, or I have to decide who I can't fund and who's going to leave. And so consolidation, when I look at a lot of these different departments, is something that I wonder, have you looked at?
Well, consult, it, so these, this, these aren't departments, these are actually divisions within the Executive Office. So, it's, there's only one department head, and that's me. So, consolidation is, it's, we haven't looked at consolidating departments. No, we haven't.
And further discussion.
What's the orange tinted, tint on these, for the, sorry, I'm always-
A budget amendment.
I'm always honing in on the Public Works Director, but what's the orange?
It was a budget amendment. It was an additional position that, additional part-time position that was added through a grant, through the budget amendment in 17.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. We're at a quarter to 7:00. Are you ready to go through Finance, or how's the, how's the game doing?
No. I'm not ready to go through Finance. Do you guys want to take a break? A break? Yeah. We'll be back at, is 8 o'clock, then? 15-minute break? If that works? Okay. We'll be back at 8:00.[1505.12] Do you guys want to take a break? A break, yeah. We'll be back at, is eight o'clock good, 15 minute break? If that works, okay, we'll be back at eight.
In our payroll department, our division, we have over 40,000 payroll transactions, which included retroactive pays for four bargaining units. Payroll is responsible for administrating almost 80% or over 80% of our city budget, as it is mostly salaries and benefits of that 80%. We're also pleased with one of our senior financial analysts obtained her CPFO certification, which is GFOA's Certified Public Finance Officers Program. This is an equivalent, in my opinion, of becoming a CPA in the private sector. It shows advanced knowledge in the field of governmental financial reporting. It's a huge asset for the city and the first for the city's finance department to have anybody obtain this distinction. Customer Service Center, or CSC, worked diligently this past year to enhance the lobby and information center. Carpeting was installed to reduce the sound and improve safety, and we are in the early stages of implementing a department assistance program. An example of this was for the past year, we provided assistant to the public works department during a maternity leave. The city continues to have successful audits and a good working relationship with the state auditor's office, working together to provide citizens with transparency and improved trust in government. We updated the city's purchasing policy this past year to adhere to changes in federal and state regulations. And lastly, but certainly not least, is our financial software implementation of our financial software system called Munis. In 2017, we prepared and went live on January of this year. On phase one, the modules that we implemented this year are accounts payable, budget, grant management, fixed assets, project accounting, contract management, and general ledger. One note on our general ledger is one of our accountants helped to structure our chart of accounts in this program, and we are now being sought after by other cities that are implementing Munis, and they are asking for how we did it. So it's, that was, that was a good thing. And then we also are responsible for business license renewal process, where we did over 3,000 business license renewals. Page six on efficiencies. The customer service counter implemented a wide range of databases, reference guides, and informational handouts to provide quality and effective customer service. And with Munis software, financial program, or software package again, an instant win was scan documents. We now have the ability to scan documents into our software system where we have instant access to invoices, contracts, have we paid this person, copies of the checks, has a check cleared? That was a big benefit. Where in the past, if we needed to find an invoice, staff had to go to actual file drawers and pull them out and try to find it. So that has been an efficiency and reduce, reduction in staff time. It has also improved the accounts payable process and eliminated redundant tasks through automated workflow processes. The finance areas of focus and service delivery, we, I've kind of grouped them in three areas, accounting and reporting, financial strategy and administration. We provide internal audits throughout the year. We act as the city's liaison with our annual state audit by the state auditor's office. We provide treasury management, payroll and benefit administration. We manage and develop, development, excuse me, manage and develop, develop the city's budget, revenue forecasting, grant management, investment management, and such. On the administrative side, we have administrative support, centralized cash sharing and receipting, and the customer service center, which also assists with pet licensing. And we also develop and produce the budget, capital facilities plan, and the CAFR documents. Some of our emerging, oh, yes, Andy.
Just out of curiosity, so the pet licensing, I thought that was kind of housed out of some other place out of state, whenever I pay.
Yes, we use a third-party vendor for processing the payments.
Okay.
But you'd be surprised at the number of people that still come into city hall to the lobby, and sometimes they bring their pets with them and get their licenses renewed right here at city hall.
Oh, you just do it here too? Okay.
Yep, we do both.
How long do you have when you have a puppy? How long, are you supposed to get a pet license? Friend? Yeah. I've got a friend that just got picked up a puppy.
I'll talk, I'll get back to you on that, yeah.
And I have a question. On your business license renewals, is there, I just want to know kind of, is there any kind of a profit margin there at all? What is the income? You don't have to answer now.
On the renewal process, that is administrative time to process those.
Oh, all right.
And, yeah, and the business license fees are part of our fee schedule, which, by the way, some of you may be aware that that will be coming back to you later this, before the end of the year, as Department of Revenue will be doing the renewals for cities based on House bill, I can't remember the name, and the legislative bill, yeah. More to come on that.
Okay, thank you.
Page eight, our emerging issues. GASB statements. GASB stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board. When people ask me, what is this? I say, I compare it to the IRS changing the tax code. They set the, GASB sets the standards for government accounting, how to report. In the last 10 years, we have had 44 statements. I've been here many years, and earlier, you might get one or two, maybe three, a year to implement. Forty-four is a lot in 10 years. They can be very complex, very time-intensive. Understanding them and making sure that you're interpreting the language correctly so that you're reporting correctly can be very challenging. So that is, that is always something that our staff works very hard on, to make sure that we are implementing these correctly. In addition to that, going along with reporting correctly is maintaining our AA2 credit rating. We are very mindful of that in our financial reporting and our transparency to ensure that we're doing the best we can as a department to maintain that, that credit rating. Another emergent, emerging issue is continuing our software implementation. The next phase, phase two, we will be implementing cash sharing module, utility billing, payroll, human resources, and our comprehensive annual financial report known as the CAFR. There's actually a module to help prepare financial statements, which our staff are looking forward to very much because they are currently doing them by Excel spreadsheets. looking forward to very much because they are currently doing them by Excel spreadsheets. And as we've already mentioned, finding ways to improve our general fund and asset replacement reserves. And then with technology advancements and new hire positions, I just wanted to bring attention, similar to the IS department, as internal services departments, increase in technology and easy access to banking transactions and things that improve. Well, many of these are time savings, efficiencies that we have with a new software. There are also instances where it may be good for the customer, but it requires additional finance staff, such as in banking, credit card transactions. It's so easy now, you've got your phone, you have your computer, easy way to pay your bills, your business license, all of these things that go through the bank. It takes additional time at our end through our many bank accounts and banking transactions for our staff to reconcile these, to make sure they're all accounted for, that we don't have fraud. So I just wanted to point that out, that that is one area where the technology also adds a little bit of increased time for staff for reconciling. Additional needs on page nine that are included in our budget. We have increased our audit costs based upon the state auditor's office projected rate increases that they have given us for 2019. We have increased training for finance staff in response to a council goal for training. We have increased it slightly to allow for more opportunities for software training and financial reporting trainings. We have included finance staff reclasses. These are separate and apart from the previous class and comp study. And then the approved Customer Service Center that was approved for beginning in 2017 was created and costs were absorbed in the 2017-18 budget, and we are just now including it and it's being reflected in this proposed budget. We have no information services or facilities requests. And unfunded additional needs, these are some of the needs that we did not put in the budget. The first one is a utility tax audit consultant. This is where you spend money to make money, in my opinion. The city has not performed a utility tax audit for many years, and generally, when you do have a tax audit on your utilities, you do find providers that may be neglected or did not report correctly, and an audit will show that we have revenue due us that we have not received. Another one is CPA firm for reviewing our CAFER and GASB statements reviews. Many area cities use the CPA firm to help ensure that the city has interpreted and reported correctly in accordance to these new regulations and standards. It is another set of eyes on the financial statements. It does not eliminate audit findings by any means, but it does relieve the burden on staff that you have just one more set of eyes that is reviewing this to ensure that you've done it correctly. A procurement manager. We are finding as purchase cooperatives, ILAs, and piggybacking on other entities have become more common. There is an increasing concern from the state auditor's office that not all of these are compliant with state law. Regulations are becoming more and more complex, placing us at a greater risk for audit findings. So we feel that a procurement manager would assist to ensure we are meeting federal and state requirements and being compliant with our own city policy. And finally, increasing a part-time accounting specialist to a full-time FTE. We have one full-time payroll specialist, and the other one is a half-time accounting specialist who also provides help with payroll and backup. I asked the payroll specialist how she does with her vacations, and she goes, well, I haven't taken a two-week vacation in 10 years because I always plan my vacations around payroll. So I will take a week, but I won't take two weeks because I have to plan around vacations. So I wanted to point that out, that increasing a part-time accounting specialist to full-time would provide some additional time to perform the payroll duties and provide adequate coverage. And with that, it's Finance Department, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. On page 11, you talked about procurement manager. How many other cities around us, or how many cities, do most cities have procurement managers?
Just off the top of my head, cities are... Most cities do have it, have one. We had one years ago, and then it wasn't working well with the person that we had, and it just never went forward. That position was eventually eliminated.
Okay, and you said there's some concern around making sure that we're doing things properly with those types of purchases, correct?
Correct. Under the current state audit that we're... The audit that is being performed right now, the auditors are letting us know that they have found some other areas where some of these piggybacking on cooperative agreements, especially if they're out of our state contracts, may not always be following our state laws and bidding processes. And therefore, they're finding some discrepancies, and they're actually informing that they will be having a meeting with the Attorney General's Office next week to find, get some more, gather some more information from the Attorney General's Office on this issue. So more to come on that.
And I want to clarify, this is not Bothell, this is statewide. And this is one of the ways we save a lot of money is by doing these cooperatives, because someone else is going through the bidding process and we're able to piggyback off. This is a very legal, it's a huge efficiency for us. And so the concern is, if the state auditor is going to feel or come to a ruling that they don't feel that this is something that they can endorse or support, then when we buy big equipment, fire trucks, so we do not have the staff capacity or the technical skills to put those kinds of bid packages together. I want to say, from an internal standpoint, we follow our purchasing policies. You updated it, we had you adopt an updated version. We work very hard to keep within those policies. We're very conscientious about it. It's important to me, it's important to the department heads. Certainly, a procurement manager would be helpful. Like, one of the things we don't do here is PO, purchase orders. That's a very... That's a huge efficiency. So for any services, we have to do a contract because we don't have POs. That would be something that a purchasing manager could implement. So some efficiencies within our purchasing department, again, potentially being able to save some money, probably not to cover an entire salary. But we're just, it's... We're not quite ready to ask yet, but we're concerned about this emerging issue that the state auditor is starting to make these findings. We'll know more when our audit is done, but we wanted to alert you to the fact that this is a statewide issue that we're facing as well.
Okay. And some of those agreements, are they in local here in our region that we work with? So is there opportunities for us to work with others that have that procurement manager to make sure?
Well, it'd have to be a piggyback system, so we'd have to... They're set up in co-ops, and so we'd have to find those and then be able to piggyback off of them. Yes, but again, it's more staff time to then find them. This is... So we haven't explored past... This is new to us. The auditor's brought it to our attention, as they have many agencies, and we're going to have to figure out ways to solve it. So we just wanted you to know about it.
Okay. And then the asset replacements you mentioned on page six. Does the Finance Department... Does each department have asset replacements individually, or they just... We look at them as a whole?
Yeah.
As a whole?
It's a whole.
And then you talked Munis, am I saying that right?
Munis.
Munis Systems? Okay. I thought it was very interesting that you said that there was... There is a cost associated with it. However, there was a savings, increased savings and time efficiency. So I'd be curious to see what that was, because that was an investment that we made. And I'd be really curious to see how much savings and how much we benefit from the cost that we put out.
Yeah, good point. I'll see if we can come up with something with time savings, because there has been some staff.
So again, as I talked about earlier, it's some savings with existing staff, but the savings is really avoided future costs. Because ultimately, if... Because the demand for service continues, the population grows, the number of staff grows, and so the demands on the staff, what we're doing is we're avoiding adding additional staff because we're using these IT functions, these systems as an efficiency. So we can try to see if we can show what's happening, if we've saved money with existing staff, but it's the avoidance of future costs is really where the savings is coming in. Because always, at some point, we're coming to you and we're saying, we need another inspector, we need another accountant, we need another person, because we physically can't keep up with the workload.
Go ahead, yeah. So you mentioned one thing, so the GASB, you've had 40 in the last 10 years. Is there, in your professional opinion, has there been any improvements to the field of financing in municipal governments because of this... Is this state level, or is this national level?
This is federal level.
It's federal level. Have we seen any benefit from this additional effort that they have created with 40 different statements, I think you called them?
There are some, probably transparency-wise, in the financial statements. There are some areas that I think have benefited. There was one a few years ago where we now report pension liability from our state pension, which isn't really our money. It goes to the state, but we have to report it as a liability in our financial statements. While it may provide some more transparency, it was enormous amounts of staff time, and that was nationwide, trying to implement that, just to show that liability. So it's kind of a...
Unfunded mandate type fund, it sounds like. And then the other one, so you mentioned in your presentation that the auditor was going to ask for more money, but you didn't say it was an 86% increase. Is that... Did they hire certified public accountants this time? Or like, what's going on? How did they... Did they have an explanation, I guess, for that level of a hike?
That is their estimate for next year. I think over the past few years, we have probably underestimated a little bit on what we had budgeted. If you have... It's depending on how much time they spend, and we do everything we can when they are here to make sure citywide, the staff know that when the auditor asks for something, you get it to them fast, because they are charging an hourly rate. If you have an audit finding or some kind of a issue, that's going to take longer for them. But they also... The state auditor's office had not increased their hourly rates very much at all for many years, and I think now there's also that part of it where they're catching up to what they probably should be charging.
So it codes the McCleary decision that the department's need to fund themselves? Okay, got it. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I just had a question about the utility tax audit consultant. Do we know what that would cost and what we might expect to see in return?
I knew you were going to ask that question. And I have not had time to look that. I looked, tried to see where we did the last one, it was so long ago, and I know the costs would have gone up, so I can do some research to get the costs, kind of an estimate of where that would cost.
Because some of these things seem like no brainers, but I'm just wondering, do we have any evidence?
Yeah, I need to follow up and get what an estimate would be.
Thank you.
So I think you partially just answered this. But so do the audit findings have any financial repercussions? Are there penalties or fines? It sounded like you said that if they do find, have a finding, that it just takes longer and then we get billed, so that's kind of an incentive to definitely reduce them. But ours, is there just any penalties or fines?
There's not really fines. The big thing is, if you have audit findings, if there's a financial audit finding or accountability finding, it can affect your credit rating, because creditors look at that, and it can affect what you get for, say, interest on your bond rates. And then fraud, if that's, you know, that's something you don't want to get, because it shows that there are not controls in place that have prevented that, or you've done your best to mitigate the fraud. But there aren't really penalties, no.
Okay. No, definitely sounds that there's impacts from having findings, so. Thanks.
You all ready? How's everyone doing? Alrighty, good to hear. So moving on to legal. So I will not hide the ball here. Legal does not have any requests for this budget cycle. We have kind of a wish list consisting of one item, but we're going to hold off to see if we can take care of that in 2021, '22. So this can be a very easy presentation. Everyone can just take a breath and relax and just enjoy. So the point of legal is to advise and represent the city in day-to-day operations, to defend the city's elected and appointed officials and employees in civil litigation, provide legal support to the city council and all city departments, especially as it relates to emerging issues. We prosecute misdemeanor crimes occurring within the city, and we try to minimize the city's exposure to financial risks. And we currently have seven full-time employees and one legal intern. In our civil section, it consists of the city attorney, the deputy city attorney, and a paralegal slash assistant risk manager. In the criminal section, we have our senior prosecutor, a prosecutor, a legal assistant, a domestic violence victims advocate and coordinator, and a legal intern. By fund, as you can see, we are heavily funded by both the general fund and risk management services, and a little bit by the utilities. In terms of the category of our spending, it is largely personnel. We have a little bit of maintenance operations and a little bit of interfund. In terms of our accomplishments, I'd like to start out by saying I was going to put my headshot on here that I got in one take. I thought that might not be appropriate, but I thought I'd mention it just for good measure. But in the criminal section, since 2001, when we went in-house, the city has filed 18,962 criminal cases. And today, we've only had one case that's been dismissed on speedy trial grounds, and that was something we were aware of and that we allowed to let go, so that that case in particular could not be refiled. But we remain committed to taking the cases that we do file all the way. We resolve 97% of our cases without a trial, and we're in the process of implementing a policy to reduce paper consumption. On the civil side, we assisted in completing the UW Bothell Cascadia College Campus Master Plan. Since the addition of the deputy city attorney, we have used less day-to-day... We have used less outside counsel on a day-to-day basis for consultation and legal research. We're responding to our current public records lawsuit in-house to reduce legal costs. We've worked with the city clerk to provide a citywide records retention training so that we can reduce the amount of time that staff is spending on public records request responses. And unfortunately, the remaining accomplishments are protected by attorney-client privilege. That's not actually supposed to be funny, that's actually just something I can't talk about. So on the emerging issues, the one that's kind of huge is the small cell wireless facility legislation. There are some federal decisions that have been made that seem to butt up against both state and local control, and so we're working with a consortium of other cities to mitigate those concerns and to possibly participate in an appeal on the federal level. The one unfunded additional need that I mentioned that is not... We're not requesting in this budget cycle, is a paperless office or filing system. Currently, other jurisdictions have that. And right now, whenever, if you see our prosecutors walk to and from court, they're often carrying two or three expandable file folders of files, and we even had to buy one of those big briefcase on wheels that they can stack them in if they're going with a particularly large calendar. I included a blank page for you to draw on. And then at the end, you have the yellow sheets that break up our budget into risk ma... I'm sorry, both the general fund and risk management. And if you have any questions, great, and if not, I believe HR is next, but I'm happy to answer whatever you have. Hey.
So I guess I'm trying to interpret the risk management portion. My question was going to be, how much does the city spend in litigation lawsuits against us or protect, you know, protecting ourselves from lawsuits? I mean, every executive session, I'm like, I wonder how much this costs. And so do we have a budget line item for like what we're spending on that?
We do, and that is under, let me find it. So if you look in on the legal budget, which is the first of the two yellow sheets, it is the 123, fourth section down. The first line reads messenger, and the second line reads other professional services. And that budget is just under $160,000 a year. So the budget that we try to work within is 80 grand per year, retaining outside counsel to either review matters that are very, very specific or to defend against various items. It also depends on which department or utility it comes out of, because sometimes there are lawsuits or legal issues related to a utility that is specific to that utility, and so those legal funds, those legal expenses are charged to that utility.
And we keep within that budget typically? I'm actually surprised it's that low.
We endeavor to. Obviously, we, like with the public records lawsuit that we had, I was just sitting in my office one day, and someone gave it to me, and we're like, we're being sued. And I was like, we're being sued. And I was like, okay, because we can't always see them coming.
Right.
So sometimes we're under, sometimes we're over, and it really depends, it really depends on the biennium.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I'm, sometimes I ask questions, because I feel like the public maybe doesn't know how much time and money is spent on defending ourselves, because the bar for cities is so high, and I don't know if the public appreciates how much money we have to spend being sued.
Yes.
Constantly.
And that is, that's one of the issues, is that when someone initiates a lawsuit, you can expect approximately at least $50,000 worth of expenditures just to get through the discovery process. It often goes above that.
Yeah. Well, and for instance, I guess one of the things that I learned was the Wayne Golf Course, everyone wants to use the clubhouse. And what I learned was what a potential lawsuit nightmare that would be. And so I just wanted to point that out for people that are listening, so they understand why we make the choices we do.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
So settlements, how does it work with settlement? I mean, I'm trying to think of ones that we could actually publicly talk about to try to give an example.
Yeah, and thank you for not...
So I'm not gonna, but like, where does that budget come from?
Right. So part of, I can show you, this is in the next page, under the self-insurance. If you look down under the 1, 2, 3, fourth one as well, it says out-of-town travel expenses, and underneath that is insurance. For the 2017, 2018, it was $1.8 million. So a little over $900,000 per year is our self-insurance premium. So it depends on the type of lawsuit, but many of the lawsuits that we are hit with are covered by insurance, some are not. Those that are not are done either in-house or farmed out to outside counsel. So it really depends on the type of issue. I can give you, for instance, a contract claim is not covered by WCIA. So any type of contract claim is either handled in-house or we have to use outside counsel, depending on the complexity of it.
And then the settlement, let's say we have to settle with somebody. Where does that come out?
It's not about this, so settlement isn't a class. It is the underlying lawsuit. So if it is a contract dispute, the settlement would come out of either the legal's budget or the general fund somewhere through an unbudgeted amount. If it is, I'm trying to think of one, there was a stormwater issue a number of years ago, WCIA, because they took that claim. When they settled, that was part of the claim, similar to if you have a car accident, there isn't a separate part for settlement, it's just, it's part of the claim as they resolve it.
So our insurance would go up, obviously, the more claims, just like your car insurance?
The more claims we have, the higher the premium. And they stay on there for five years. If we have a large claim, after five years, that drops off, and in theory, our self-insurance rate should go down. Some instances, when one drops off, another one jumps right on there, so it kind of stays the same or goes up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So just below that is the miscellaneous. What falls under miscellaneous?
Oh, I wish Julie Evans were here, because she is the one that would be able to answer that. I don't know off the top of my head, but I can definitely let you know next week.
Okay. And then tagging on to the insurance thing, the 1.83, that insurance is increasing by 250,000.
Correct.
And so that is a premium increase?
Correct.
Okay. And do we project that that's going to continue to go up incrementally throughout future years, or?
The reason that it went up, we did have one very expensive lawsuit drop off the books after five years, but unfortunately, we had two more very expensive and very, I'm trying to think of how I can say this, issues involving high risk that are now being tagged onto the insurance.
Okay.
So if those don't pan out, then potentially next year, the premium would go down.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, HR, it's you.
I just don't know how I'm going to follow that. Okay. The first slide of the human resources, you're going to hear a lot of mission statements in the next couple of weeks. We don't have yet a mission statement, we're working on that. We're currently, since I've become the director, working on a strategic planning process. What you see on that slide anyway is the seven objectives, strategic objectives that we have come up with in the department, and how we're going to focus our resources moving forward. We're trying to create accessible and paperless HR, have clear and meaningful policies and procedures, a safe work environment, strategic employee development planning, which is important because it's not only a department goal, but it's a council goal, but having, bringing train in-house and being smart about that, rather than simply just not using those dollars wisely. Recruiting and retaining diverse and talented workforce, modern HR for a modern city through continual improvement, and we'll talk a little bit more about that coming up. The HR department has six employees. I'd like to focus on the analysts at the bottom, because they'll become relevant in discussing the future of the department down the road. The way we split up our services and human resources is that Michelle, our senior human resources analyst, does most of labor and employee relations and policy work, and our HR analyst does most of our benefits compensation work, and then Susan does most of the recruiting and the EO work. And that's relevant for a slide that's coming up down the road. As far as accomplishments and efficiencies, I'm really proud of the work that these guys are doing. They're doing really great work and really coming together as a team. We've created a new safety program at the city. We hired a new safety manager last April. She's currently doing an audit of all the safety programs at the city. She has done a good job looking in departments and what they're doing and kind of analyzing the current state of our state's safety program. We just recently had a safety rodeo for the first time, where we invited employees to go around at various booths and learn about different safety and health issues. It was very well received. We're looking at processes in HR. If you go into the human resources office and you look up on the wall, you'll see a big process flow map of our recruitment process. We're using some kaizen principles and process improvement principles to look at various business processes. Kaizen means change for good, it's a Japanese term. Google Toyota. Look at some of the stuff that Executive Constantine is doing at King County. We're applying a lot of those practices when looking at these processes. We'll have another opportunity to do that when we're implementing the new HRMS system that was proposed in the last budget, to look at more business processes. Supervisor training, a big goal of the council, to increase training internally in the organization. We started a supervisory training program this year and are offering six supervisor trainings in the fall and throughout the winter that'll provide different skills to our supervisory staff. We've created a diversity committee to make Bothell a more welcoming workplace and look at those issues and advise the ELT on those issues. We've won the Well City Award, which saves the city $90,000 in health premiums for, man, seven or eight years running at least, and we're looking good for this year, too. We've implemented the Washington, the changes to the Washington State sick leave law, and we did so without a lot of bargaining problems with our labor unions. We were able to agree to memorandums of understanding with all four of our unions. We've hired, and we hired 91 positions in 2017 and 81 positions in 2018, and are on pace to beat that 91 that we did from last year. I see a couple of hands.
You know, I want clarification on that, because everyone's going to say, why did you hire 91 people?
Well, if you look on the next slide, the next slide breaks that up.
Excellent, thank you so much.
50%, of those 81 positions were turnover, 10% were new positions, 3% were limited-term positions, 11% were due to a reorg, and 22% were temporary positions. Some are hires, internships, things of that nature. Okay. Human Resources by Fund is on the next slide. The only thing I'd point out here on this slide is with our Left One Fund, we actually had an opportunity to make a cut this year. We cut about $77,000 of that fund. Some of that's because some of our Left One participants are going on to Medicare, which helps those costs. And then we're forecasting that we're going to have less claims over the next two years within the Left One Fund. By category, most of our budget is personnel, with some maintenance operations and then a small portion of interfund. I wanted to show you a little bit what makes up HR operations. It's a little different in our department, because some of the stuff that makes up our maintenance and operations budget are citywide programs, employee programs. In fact, that's about 41% of our budget, our maintenance and operation budget. The rest of it, the six, there's only 60% of our budget that actually has to do with the implementation of HR services. And I just thought that was a different way to look at it. But the point I'm trying to make is that that 61% is really the machine. That's, that's how we do what we're supposed to be doing within human resources, to keep in compliance, hire people, do all the other things that we're trying to do. We also manage the safety budget. We're asking, this is the first budget that will have a full centralized safety program within the budget. That's how it breaks up. We're going to talk a little bit more about safety here in just a second. In regards to areas of focus and service delivery, we are working to become more of an HR business partnering model within the human resources department, to provide the services that you see on that page, and then the other services that we provide, too, like the wellness program, employee events, and trainings. And we are not asking for additional staffing, but we are asking for a couple of classifications in this budget, because we would like to do, implement a new organization chart within the department. And basically, what you see here is you see two program-level positions, the labor and employee relations manager and the safety manager. The HR business partners, instead of, remember how I told you in the org chart, we broke them up into HR functions, benefits, labor and employee relations. What those folks will do is, instead of being assigned an HR function, they'll be assigned departments, and they'll provide all those functions to those departments. And it will give them an opportunity to kind of go out in the departments, learn about them, learn who they are, what their needs are, and be able to better provide services. And then we are going to do, without an administrative assistant in human resources, we're going to make that position a human resources generalist position, so we can have somebody that is providing more operational-type HR services and helping those human resources business partner it out. That will mean that myself, the safety manager, and the labor and employee relations manager will take on a little bit more of administrative tasks, but we're a fairly small department and think that that, this is a better use of the resources moving forward. In regards to safety, our areas of focus in service delivery is obviously number one by far, making sure that our workers come home safe every day, increased awareness and knowledge of safety and workplace hazards, complying with state requirements, and then lowering LNI premium costs. Some additional needs in the HR budget, based upon input and feedback I got from the department heads, we increased the recruitment and advertising budget. Folks just feel like we need to do a little bit better job promoting our positions and getting people to apply for them. Third-party services, when I came to the department in 2017, we were overspending in this area. In order to run a modern HR department, you need to have access to labor attorneys, labor negotiations people, investigators, things of that nature. And so we bumped that cost up a little bit to better meet our needs. Benefit fees, we transitioned HRA vendors at the end of 2017, I think. The administrative costs from the new vendors are much more than the old vendors, and so that's an increase. A citywide training program, the budget includes about $85,000 each year to meet the council goals of improving training within the city. That'll probably give us an opportunity to provide anywhere from 15 to 20 in-house trainings to focus on skills, skill development with our employees and our supervisors. The diversity committee, we have a new committee. There is a small budget for them, it's very small, but that is, that is an additional need. And then we're asking to join a retrospective rating program through the Association of Washington Cities with our safety program. I'll discuss that a little more in upcoming slides, but generally, what a retrospective rating program, it's a, it's a, basically what you do, you join the rating program, and your premiums and your risk are spread apart about with the other members of the program and in case, other cities. So if that, if your retrospective rating pool performs good, well, and injuries at the city are reduced, we have an opportunity to get some of our LNI premiums rebated back to us, and so, and get some of that money back. I'm going to talk about that a little more, bit more on the next slide. One of the challenges that we're facing is that our experience modification factor is fairly high at the city. What experience modifier is, is simply a way to adjust our premiums based upon the number of injuries we have. The important thing to remember about that is that an experience modification factor of one is basically our base premium. If we have, if our injuries go up, and it goes, and we go above one, the costs are higher. If we go below one, the costs are lower. That green line is one, that dark green line, solid green line. The red line above it is Bothell. That, the dash line that you see below the green line is what the average experience modification factor of people that join a retrospective rating program are. And then if we join that retrospective rating program, we are required to have a goal that is the bottom line, which is a .75 experience modification factor. And what that essentially means is that will drive down costs. So the point we're trying to make is that, the point of the safety program, obviously, is to make sure that our workers go home safe every day and to educate them how to do that. But in doing that, we can also save costs. The next slide shows you what we would have saved since 2012 each year if our experience modification factor was one. If we'd have spent, since that time, if we'd, if we'd had an experience modification factor of one, we'd have saved about $180,000. If we lower it to the average of the folks that are in the retrospective rating program I talked to you about, we will save $65,000 a year on top of the rebate premium that we will, that we will also get for joining that program. The point I'm trying to make is that we can cover a pretty, pretty large portion of the maintenance and operations costs of the safety program by implementing things correctly and working on these numbers. Councilmember Agnew asked me about injury costs when we, when we had the council retreat, and so I put this slide in here. It shows our LNI claims over the last five years. We've had 130 claims, and their total claim cost has been just over $1 million. 72 of those claims were medical-only, meaning they went to the doctor and came back to work, they didn't take any days off. 40 of them had actual time loss, so they were injured and then had to take days off work. Four are in, they're not yet determined, we're still determining them, and then 14 of those claims were rejected, meaning LNI didn't accept them. Some emerging issues in HR, lots of laws and regulations. We talked about the Janus Supreme Court decision last week a little bit. Paid family leave is coming up. We will be required to implement that at the city. We have to start doing that next year, and then the full implementation is the year after. The higher LNI premiums, which I already talked to you about, contract negotiations, you know about the fire negotiations. Next year, both, both the police unions, the captains and the guild are up, as long as the, as well as the ASME union. The increased staffing, the 91 positions filled and the 81 positions filled will probably go up if the levy passes for sure next year. And then economics, some of the things that Jennifer talked about. Economics obviously impact compensation, benefits, things of that, that nature, and we're obviously keeping an eye on that. As far as information services and facilities requests, we requested a safety facility tracking system. Essentially, what we're trying to do there is track requests that are made by the safety committee, and then also figure out where they are as far as being fixed. A big thing with the safety program, and as we're starting it, is to, is to try to use as much automation as possible, rather than, rather than to start doing it with everything with paper. We don't have a current way to do this at the city, but we think there's some ways that we can use some of the programs that we already have implemented to do this, and it will help us use data to make better decisions about, about safety. And the cost of that is somewhere between $0 and $10,000. Zero if we can get another one of our systems to cover the costs. As far as unfunded additional needs, in going through the process with the ELT and this city manager, we made the decision to put, or to propose a two-year freeze on the tuition reimbursement program at the city. We've talked a lot about appropriately funding that program, which hasn't always been done in the past, which has kind of created a first-come, first-served system. We had 18 tuition reimbursement requests from the 2019-20 budget. If we were to implement that fully, it would be $120,000 about over the next two years, and we currently are not putting that in, in the budget.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, this might be an ideal time to extend the meeting, based on the amount of information we have left to cover and the executive session. My recommendation is to extend till 10:30. It's a recommendation, do what you want.
I move to extend the meeting till 10:30.
Second.
Moving, second to extend the meeting till 10:30. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously, go ahead. Pass unanimously, go ahead.
Quick question.
Yes.
Just to clarify that for reducing injuries, that's through AWC, the retrospective rating program? Is that based on city employee size? How did, I'm sure we pay into that.
We do.
And what would that be about? Because the savings sounded significant.
The fees are about $50,000 per year, which would be saved when we can reduce injuries and bring them down closer to those numbers of the other cities that are in that program. We will more than save those dollars.
So we would save 65 minus 50 is 15 plus the reduced premium rates. Is that right? Am I following you correctly?
Yeah, if, if we, if we had an experience modification factor of .9, which is the average of the city in that program, it would save $65,000. The rebate, I can't, they won't tell us how much money the rebates are because it depends on a calculation. I'm, I comfortably would say that we, we potentially could be eligible for rebates anywhere between 40 and $60,000 though. So.
So it might be a wash.
Right.
But we'd have fewer injured people and more staff doing their job.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Did you want to go? Okay. This might be a stupid question, but the, so the emergency management's out of the city manager's office and then the safety manager would be out of HR. Is there, I mean, to me, it seems like those two would kind of have some synergy. Is that? I don't know. It's not really our purview to say.
They do have synergy. They work really well. In fact, the new safety manager backs up the emergency manager in the EOC. They worked really well together on the recent safety rodeo. One of the things that we had at that event was a earthquake truck that the emergency manager, so they're, they're working together really well.
Okay, cool. I just seemed weird in there. Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
Thank you. And on your overtime, and it looks like there is going to be an increase of 9.4%. On overtime.
So, and part of this is because I wasn't here during this time and I'm not, what I'm saying is, is I don't fully understand how the overtime increased in 2017, but we over, way overspend it on overtime in 2017. So what that cost is, is an average of that overspending and what we spent in 2018, which is literally nothing on overtime. I am concerned however with the implementation of the new HR RMS system. That will take a considerable amount of staff time and having an overtime budget available in order to be implement that program effectively is going to be important.
So I guess I would be interested to know how we could avoid overtime. Would we gain if we had an additional half, part-time staff? Because overtime costs a lot of dollars. And so, you know, which is the best way to go? Is my question.
To be honest with you, I didn't consider asking, looking at, looking at additional part-time staff, but what I can take a look at that number over the next week or so and, and have a better answer for you, answer for you quite frankly, than I do right now.
I think one of the things that we're learning is being the small city that we are, is that when we go through these major software implementations, is we're asking the existing staff to do their regular job, which they're already at capacity, and then to, to participate in this implementation. So utility billing is going through this. Finance just went through this. HR is getting ready to do it. We also talked about when Nick presents the Park and Recs budget, we actually have a part-time, a limited term person in for when they do a software implementation. The question is on something as complicated as HRMS, can you find a limited term person that can backfill behind? It's such, when you look at the department, it's six people, highly technical, highly competent people. Is there some sort of part-time limited term person that you could bring in? Are there enough duties for that person to do? So that's what's happening now in utilities is there's only two people who do all the utility billing for the city. And what we found is the implementation of the online billing system, which we're all super excited about, was physically not possible for those two women to do all the work they need to do and do the system implementation. And so we've now brought in a part-time, a limited term, extra help person to help do phones and some clerical things. So it depends on the department and it depends on what duties could be siphoned off and given to a limited term person. So we are looking at those with each implementation and recognizing that we cannot absorb it 100% with the existing staff, that we do need help.
And, and I would support that because I do know that overtime is, you know, very costly.
Yes.
And so whenever we can reduce it by bringing someone else in to take up some of those hours, it's beneficial.
Great. We appreciate that.
And something else that I, else councilmember that over the time we would like to do in HR is, is potentially use interns, which may be less than the overtime budget. But that, that amount, if you look on your yellow sheet, the total, the total cost of the overtime or the HR department would be far, far less than adding additional staff. Yes.
So I actually had that same question. And, and what I'm reading is it's $8,000 of overtime?
Right.
Okay. So obviously a person, hiring a new person would probably be a lot more than that. But I guess what I'm curious about is, is are, are not all of these positions salaried positions? Like how does overtime work? Because?
No. My position is salaried and the safety manager is salaried. The new labor and employee relations manager will be salaried. The business partners and the human resources generalist are not. They're, they're hourly overtime eligible positions.
Okay. That's what I was confused about. And then the other question that I had was under household supplies. It's going up 547.7%. It says includes event funds.
Right. So we, in the last couple of years, the city has started focusing on providing a couple of employee events to do every year, a picnic. And then an employee awards event that happens now in the January, February timeframe. We have, those funds used to be in the wellness budget and were transferred to the HR budget. But we've, we've also increased that amount a little bit to help pay for, to help, to help pay for those events because we basically weren't budgeting for them in the past.
And then the other question I had was 15 to 20 trainings a year seems like a ton. Is that for all employees across the organization or is it various? So it's various groups?
Right. It, the, all, all employees will be eligible to attend many, by far a majority of them. There are some times where departments have specific needs and we use the HR department budget at times to address that. Like for instance, there may be personnel issues or there may, or maybe trying to avoid personnel issues. So we bring in a trainer to sort of work with that specific group. But by and large, a majority of those will, will, most employees will be eligible for. I will tell you, we will not come close with that budget in meeting the need. There, there's a lot more training, training wanted than we will be able to provide with 15 training or 20 to 20 trainings a year.
Okay. Thanks.
I got a big list for you. The first one would be the out-of-town travel expenses.
Yes.
Major increase on that one. 134%, is that correct?
Right. How do I address this one? So if you look through the entire HR budget, what you see is a lot of big increases and a lot of big decreases. We did a good job of going line by line and working with staff to kind of identify the areas where we were really underspending and there are areas where we're really overspending. This is an area where we were overspending. Human resources requires a lot of understanding current laws, how they're changing, which requires people to go to trainings and things of that nature. And we were simply spending more in that area to go to conferences, various trainings to the association, Washington Cities. People have to travel to those things and we simply were, were paying more than what we were budgeting for in that area.
Okay, so it's, you're, to go from 10,800 to 25,000, you're saying we were, we should have been budgeting 25,000?
I, I don't know the number we were overspending exactly. I can, I can tell you that. I can, I can go back and look at that. But yeah, we, we basically mapped out how many of those trainings we'd like to, you know, we think we need to attend a year and we, we budgeted accordingly.
Okay. Kaizen process. How many departments are doing that right now? Is it the whole city, two departments, human resources and? Okay.
Right. It's the, it's the development services. So it's fire, public works and CD as part of the development services process.
Okay. Has those departments gone through training for that or they just?
Yes, there's a, oh yes.
An extensive training?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, good. I think it's a, it's a great process to go through. I've been through it myself personally. And it helps streamline your processes and push versus pull and all that. So very, very good. The positions on page five. There was 10 new positions in, hiring in 2018, or excuse me, nine new positions, 10%. I believe is that the 9.1? Take the 91 new hires. I mean, just generally, where were those hires at? For fire?
We had one parks and recreation position that was a new, new position that was created in 2017 and hired in 2018. So that was a parks where you can make maintenance worker lead. We also had a parks maintenance worker. We had three firefighter over hires. A senior plans examiner. A sustainability assistant. The safety manager. How many was that?
You're going.
That wasn't a new position. That was a, we filled a vacant position.
Okay, so and then the, the three fire over hires were, they reduced our overtime though, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that was good. Okay.
Well, do you want to answer that?
Okay. All right. You had mentioned there's a small budget for interdepartment diversity.
Right.
Can you tell me what, what that budget is?
I believe it's $5,000 a year.
So we spend $5,000 a year on diversity?
We spend $5,000 in that year for that committee to have operational costs to, to, yes, to implement programs that will towards creating awareness about diversity and generally making the workforce more open, yes.
Okay.
So that's a brand-new committee that was just started. So that's a guess and, and we look forward to that committee growing and that's just the start.
It's a start. It's, we started. That's good. The claims, the, there was 130 claims for a million, just over a million dollars.
Yeah.
Is that, are those, where do those claims generally come from? Is that from public works? Is it from fire, from police? Where do you?
I can get a breakdown of that. Right now I don't know, but we could potentially get a break. That's an LNI number. Those are the numbers that the Department of Labor Industries gave to us. And so we, we could potentially get a breakdown of that.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you.
So I'm a big fan of training and, and all that, but it's, is, is it the 25,000 just for the six people in HR for travel expenses for two years? And then while you're looking, the, the follow-on thing would be the training and conference registrations. I mean, we're up at 172,800 and that's actually not just the six people, right? That's?
No, that's the entire city.
Okay, good.
I, I will get a breakdown of that, of, of the HR training, the, the cost increase and what that is made up of. I, I don't, I don't have that in front of me.
But remember it's two years.
Right.
About $10,000, $12,000 a year.
$12,000, yeah.
So if you take a flight, airplane ticket, the, the car, the rental, the, the hotel, all of that. So it's, it's not 25 a year. It's for two years.
It's for two years. Okay.
And the, basically what we, I'll, I'll tell you what we budgeted for. We budgeted for them to train, take a training about two, two to four a year, just as sort of a travel to Seattle type of training. We budgeted for everybody to attend, attend one regional conference. And then we budgeted for a couple of national conferences that we would break up amongst the staff. We don't, we don't know. They're, they're not assigned any specific person at this point.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Yep.
And I have one. Can you explain when maintenance in operation, which is supplies and services, has such an increase? 1,311.9%? What does that mean?
It's under the safety program.
It's under the safety program, yep.
Well, we did not have a safety program. We had, we had a safety committee with a small budget. So everything in safety, this is a, because we had our safety manager decided to centralize and have a, a citywide safety program, all of the safety program is new. The maintenance and operations portion of that, so you were looking at supplies, covers the retro program. It covers some consulting costs to help us develop an accident prevention program, a citywide accident prevention program. That takes a lot of writing and particularly research and time. We found a way to work with the Evergreen Safety Council to, to help us do that. It's a, rather than hiring a consultant, but there's a cost to it. And if we're going to have a safety program, we have to have an accident prevention program. It's mandated by law. It also includes safety training. So there's some domino effects here. If you have an accident prevention program, what you're, what you're required to do by state law, which is made up of confined space and hearing and all the various safety, you know, things that we have to look into, lockout, tagout. I'm not an operations expert, but all the various safety things, you have to actually train employees on, you have to mandatorily by, by state law, sometimes every other year, sometimes every three years, depending on the program. But that, providing that training is, is, we haven't budgeted for that before. And so that's what we're trying to do here.
So if I could follow, I would say that with the increase I'm seeing for reducing injuries and saving costs, you would think there would be a, a goal for reducing these injuries and costs which can save us dollars.
Absolutely.
So we, we don't have a goal right now, do we?
We absolutely do. If we, in the, in the, in the, in the short term, our goal is to take our experience modification factor down by one. Now, which, which means less injuries. I can't calculate how many exact less injuries that is right here for you today, but that, that's the metric we're using to determine how, how, how much injuries we're reducing. Is that experience modification factor? So as that goes down, right, injuries go down and cost savings go up.
We would really need to see that, wouldn't we? I mean, if we're going to put this kind of investment in, then we would hope to see that goal. Meet, to meet that goal.
Yeah. I mean, absolutely. We, I mean, we, and we would need, we would absolutely need to evaluate that and develop metrics that evaluated the safety program as a whole and, and continuously report on that. Absolutely.
I'm going to go round two. So if we, if I'm, if I'm reading correctly, it was just over a million dollars, right, for five years?
Right.
So if we implement the safety program and we reduce it, 125,000 we're paying for that program and we cut it in half, then it's paid for itself. Is that correct?
Cut what in half? I'm not sure.
The injuries, the amount of injuries. If you implement a program.
Yes.
Safety, the safety manager implements a program.
Right.
And you can cut your injuries in half.
Right.
And you're averaging $250,000 per year for five years.
Right.
Then you essentially have paid for the safety manager.
That, essentially, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
That is, that is the goal here is to reduce, to reduce injuries so we can.
It's not just about money. It's about.
Right. It's about the less injuries. Absolutely.
Sending them home to their families. Yeah.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
You got a beating. Sorry about that.
No, I, I, I actually appreciate it. I'm, you know, it's, I'm a new director and we took a fresh look at this budget and there's a lot of change within it. And I, so I think that level of questioning is absolutely appropriate.
Good. Oh yeah, I keep asking them questions.
All right.
I'm going to make you, I'm going to make you earn your sleep tonight. So just a quick question because, and maybe Jennifer's just done too good of a job here. I see one of your wishes, you know, additional needs are recruitment and advertising. I see one of your wishes, you know, additional needs are recruitment and advertising.
Right.
And I'm thinking, but we've been doing a great job getting some really great people in here as of late, so.
Right.
What in this are, do you see that we're lacking, and what is the dollars that you're thinking that are additional to what's already being invested into recruiting and advertising?
We are doing a great job, definitely at the higher levels, in part because we use funds that weren't budgeted for to hire an executive recruiter to help fill those positions, so those are funds that weren't budgeted for. We are struggling in very specific technical, logical areas. When we hire an engineer, difficult to recruit for. When we hired a utility manager, it took us eight months and we had to go out twice. When we hire, if we have to go hire a SCADA specialist and specialized possessions, positions like that, it is a much more difficult task, and we didn't, in the past, have the recruiting budget to really address the difficulty in those areas, and that's kind of what we're trying to do by increasing that recruiting budget.
So you're talking about a really, what I would use the old-school term, a very high-powered headhunter who knows that can match need to what's out there, go out and look for people to fill that job?
No. We do, not budgeted within the HR department, but we do do that for executive-level positions. What I'm talking about is more specialist, journey-level, supervisory-type positions in the engineering areas and the technical areas. IS may be another area that would be very difficult to recruit in, where in the past we haven't budgeted the funds to really do what we need to do to go get those specialized people, and that's what we're trying to do within this budget.
With in-house staff.
Right.
So it's just extra tools for the current in-house staff, better advertising in certain magazines, certain publications, certain organizations, and so that's what we're trying to do.
I feel sorry.
Good job.
Mr. Mayor, can I do a time check and a process check? So we're at 9:15, and we still have a executive session, we think is about a half an hour, and we have two fairly large, but especially the Public Works budget is quite large. So one of the questions would be, we have the 16th, so it's a full council meeting, and then we're going to continue this study session at the end of that council meeting, so we figure it would start around 8 o'clock and we'd go again, but we have several more departments to do. We do have the Tuesday of October 23 available if we needed to roll over, so one of the questions would be, if you'd like to finish with Fire tonight, we could wait with Public Works, roll Public Works into the 16th, see as far as we can get on the 16th, and then finish on the 23rd of October, because we really appreciate your.
I'm starting to worry, yeah, too.
I know. We really appreciate, this was the point of this, was to, I hate to rush this great conversation and dialogue, I'm hopeful that it's as helpful to the council as it's been for us, and so that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I'm with that. How do you guys feel about adding a meeting? So we can cut this early and go to.
Right. The challenge will be for us is the, we need a lot of the direction, it doesn't give us very much time between the 23rd to come to you again on the 30th, then, with this initial proposed budget, so we may ask for some of your understanding and flexibility that things may look a little raw on the 30th, because we're going to get direction from you then on, just a week before we would come to you on the 30th of October. We really needed those two weeks to be able to complete that, so it's going to really push us to be able to get that to you on the 30th. That's.
Or we could add a special meeting in between, so there's more time for the 30th.
Like the 18th or something like that? You could do that as well.
Would you guys have?
17th or 18th, that same week?
Anybody have a preference?
We could do a polling and see.
Grab your calendars.
If folks are available on the 17th or 18th.
I agree with you. I want to be able to be fresh for Fire and Public, especially Public Works.
I'm hoping we can get through Fire tonight, would be if you have the diligence.
Yeah, and then how much time do you need? 30 minutes?
And we can probably do it in less.
Okay, so we can get through.
Yeah. We could probably do it in 10 or 15 minutes, executive session.
Okay. Does anybody have, everybody checking their calendars? I better check, too.
Is that okay with your schedule? Okay.
I could do 17th or 18th. You're easy? Yeah, I don't think it would be a long. Is it Thursday?
18. I think, I think that.
But you could do the 18th?
Ted, I think the 23rd would be hard, huh? Yeah. I think we would really appreciate if we could come the 17th or the 18th.
So it sounds like we have at least a majority of council that can do the 18th, and the 17th was a no-go for some, so.
The full majority, or are we losing somebody on the 18th?
Did we lose anybody from the 18th? Yeah, I think we were all there for the 18th, so.
Okay. That would be great.
One grudgingly, but we'll be there for the 18th. Oh, two grudgingly, but this is important, so. Okay.
All right, then.
Special meeting on the 18th.
All right, and so we're going to move into Fire.
All right, now the fun begins. So I will stay, I'll preface this by saying in the rules of PowerPoint, this could be the all-time worst PowerPoint ever, but that's why we're not, that's one of the reasons we're not putting this on the screen, because it would just be mind-blowing, but there's a lot of information in here. I'm going to go through high level, just touch on a few points on each of the, on the slides. If you have questions, stop me at the end. So we'll start with the first one, kind of who are we, Fire. This is defined in our strategic plan we did just about a year ago. You can read most of that. I think it's important, though, just to read the vision, improving the quality of life for our team, our partners, and those we are proud to serve while engaging the community, making every customer's day better. So it's somewhat audacious statement, but that's what they're supposed to be, far-reaching, and we strive to do that every day, everybody, administration, firefighters, everybody's working on that hard. The next slide, we have the chart, org chart, and the only change, we had a slight organizational change in the yellow section with the admin. We moved the Battalion Chief Support Services under my direct supervision, partly because they are physically located at the admin building, and I was bugging them all the time anyway, so it just made more sense for me to just to take them under my direct supervision. So that was a slight change of what we had in the past. Seems to be working well. He may have a different opinion of that, but. So on the next page, we have our sections. We have the administrative section, which obviously does budgeting, personnel. We have the Support Services Division with that. Response Operations, that's the boots on the ground, the firefighters, the engines on the road. We have the Training Division, and that's mostly the reactive group. Those are the ones that go out and put the fires out and solve the medical problems. And then we have Fire Prevention and Community Risk Reduction, and those are our proactive folks trying to save us from going out and doing this, trying to put us out of a job, which is awesome. Public education's under that group, and they try to minimize the impacts of fire and things from starting in the first place. So we go into Accomplishments and efficiencies, administrative section, just again, just a few highlights. One of the things we did was increase staffing. We talked about this, the over-hires by three firefighters. That is cutting overtime. It's about $5,000 to $10,000 a month that we're saving on overtime. I will completely honest, it's not what we had thought initially going into this. We'd hoped to save more, but part of the problem is we don't have as much overtime this year. It's just kind of weird. It's not as quite, the levels of overtime aren't what we see. So we're receiving a lot of overtime, it's making a big impact, but not quite the impact we'd hoped. So we'll keep monitoring this, but it is saving money. We've done a complete review of the department's standard operating procedures. We had all the people that are responsible for each of these review them. We are in the process of systematically going through and actually updating and getting those back on the books, so that's an ongoing project. And then something that's kind of cool, we are taking advantage of the Ground Emergency Medical Transport, GEMT program, which was, came out of a House bill in 2007. It was from the 2015, 16 legislative session. Anyway, what that allows us to do is recover actual Medicare, Medicaid transport costs. So when we bill somebody, we just bill them a flat fee, and this allows us to recover all the costs, and it's been used all over extensively. The first check is due in December, we're expecting somewhere $200,000 to bring in from that. Next year, it'll be less, because the first check is for a couple, three years' worth, so after this, it'll be each year. So it's still a pretty good chunk of money for just applying for this, not a loophole, but a House bill. So that's, pretty excited about that, seeing how that works out. The next page, Safety and Support Division. We did a, you probably heard about the air quality study. We have the crews work out in the bays right there, and at Station 42, there's some concern about diesel particulates and stuff in the bay with them working out. We had the UW come in, L and I did a study on that. No significant findings, no real negative findings. They had some suggestions how we could make things better, but there was no smoking gun, so to speak, kind of thing, that said, you've got to stop this practice now. So that was good. We took that as a positive. It's still not the greatest thing, but was, from what we were thinking, it was good. So, and then we also worked with IS Department to rewire all our data wiring to bring them up to kind of an acceptable level in all the stations, and Joe, I think he described it as going from a tin can and a string to a brick phone, so we've got a ways to go, but it's better than it was. So next page, Response Operations, just a bunch of stuff going on. One of the inexpensive, but hopefully impactful things, we started the hood exchange program, which is really inexpensive, the hoods they wear under their helmets and their SCBA's when they go into fire and contaminated atmospheres. Long, long time, we just wear those things. We didn't really wash those. We wash your bunker gear, but you wouldn't wash your hood, and there's all kinds of stuff in those, and there's linked to throat cancer and that kind of thing. So we have got a program now, we just take them off. When you come out of a fire, you take your hood off, get a new hood, and we just wash them and recycle them, so making a real impact on that. We are purchasing, we have purchased, and we are about to start Monday, start installing the new Stryker cots. That's a brand name. We've had them for, we've had the Strykers for a while. They're self-lifting, but we have now got them, they're self-loading, so now they actually come up and dock and lift and put themselves in the rig, and so this is hopefully going to really impact our repetitive injury, back injury, you know, that loading, that constant loading over time really is bad on the back, so this is going to help that a lot. So we're excited about that. And then we also are, right now, we're going to start putting into play the SCBA's we just got. We went to Scott Bear Packs from MSA, it's a brand, but we went on a regional grant, so all the departments around us now, even Stonefish County are using Scots, so interoperability is awesome, and we saved a bunch of money by going with this grant, so that was cool. Those will be in service for sure by the end of the year, if not closer to the 1st of December. Next, Response Operations, going down here, we just purchased some battery-operated, the brand name's Hurst, they're E-Tools, electronic jaws of life, if you want. They're extremely portable, so now we're not tethered to the hoses anymore, the hydraulic lines, we're not tethered to those, we can go anywhere with these things. They're not light, they're pretty damn heavy, actually, but they work great, and the batteries are awesome, and the folks love them, so we got those on, they're excited about that. We've started, Chief McDonald actually started a formal after-shift transfer, kind of, things would go on during the shift that I wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily hear about, that we might want to hear about, that'd be kind of cool, maybe let the city manager know or the council know, and it just would slip by, because the firefighters would do it, you know, like maybe, like a birth of a child or something, and they, you know, they'd just high-five and go on, and that's kind of cool, we want to know about that. So we started a process where they give us an actual, a quick note at the end of their two days there, the B.C. does, say, hey, what happened? Here's some highlights, here's some significant calls we went on, this is how many trainings we did, this is how many auto aides came into the department, how many we gave out, all that kind of stuff, just a real quick bullet, but it really helps us tie in with them, so that's a good thing. And then we've started a project charter, kind of what IS has been doing on their projects, but it's really to get us, to make sure we're on track with budget. We have to, they have to come up with a mission for their charter when they're doing this, when each of the disciplines, when they're going to put something new into play, they have to come up with this formula and stick to it. It's an interdepartmental kind of thing, but it helps us keep on track, keep track of budgets, so that's a cool thing we just started doing. Training Division, on the next page, we started, this year, we've got a peer support program. You probably heard, I think it's nationally, but in all kinds of phases of life, but firefighters especially, the suicide rate is really going up, and we are trying to get a handle on that. One of the ways we want to do is mental health is through peer support, so we have people that are trained up in the department that can just listen, and if people have an issue, they want to talk, they can just listen to you. They don't, they're not trained psychologists, that, you know, they'll suggest, hey, you might want to get some help, but they're just here to listen. And bigger than that, they've started, they've reached this out to countywide, so we have a list of peer support people, so if someone in Bothell, if I have a problem, and I know my peer support people, but I'm really not comfortable, I can reach out to someone in Bellevue or Woodinville that doesn't know me as well, but I know they're a firefighter and they can talk to me, so we've started that. So they're all in that program, too, so it's really a regional approach, and that's pretty cool. We have three people that went through some peer fitness training, and that is kind of a wellness-type thing, prevention, working out, job hardening, they do job-specific skills, they teach you how to, they look at how you walk, and if you have a funny gait, maybe we can correct that, or they're doing a drill now where they're replicating just stepping out of the engine, they have a box you're stepping down onto, so, because that's, we do that a lot, and that causes injuries, and if we can figure out how to fix folks, you know, or teach them how to do that well, we'll help ourselves out, probably keeping people coming home healthy. Next page, Fire Prevention. They are almost done with rewriting, updating the Bothell Municipal Code. I know that's, there's several other people involved, but the Fire is just about done with that, and they're basing that on the National Fire Codes and regional updates, that's been a big lift, but they're pretty much done with that. And they've worked collaboratively with community development to build a post-fire notification process form, which really helps out when, so we, again, just improving communications through the groups, they know we had something going on, they can go out and follow up. The next page with Fire Prevention, this one I like, the Compliance Engine, it's Bryser, and what that has to do with is, is this company is in charge of essentially helping us out with making sure that buildings and fire alarm systems are in compliance. It's a chronic problem. There's all kinds of things that have to get updated and checked annually, every five years, there's all kinds of rules on these things, and it's really hard for us to keep up on that, and I would say, I don't know, right now, any year, we could be 60%, 80% out of compliance, not just because we don't, we just miss stuff, we don't know it, we don't know what to look for, it gets hidden, whatever. This company goes out and does it for us, is free to the city, helps us with WSRB, and one of their things is within two years, they say we'll be in 90% compliance. So it's pretty cool for us, you know, a great way to get the job done that we need to get done without costing us any money. The next thing they did was they established a high-profile task force in conjunction with code enforcement, fire prevention, and police, and they go out to do things like, oh, we had that drug house, they just closed down, that was part of that thing, they went through there, like a hoarder house. If we determined there's some problem like that, all these three groups get together and devise a way to go out and tackle these problems that we have in the community, so that's a great resource we have with that. Down to Public Education, quick on that, we did, again, the DUI drill up at Bothell High School. We had about 700 of the seniors come up there, again, 20-plus years we've been doing that, it's a great program, very well received, and then, of course, we had the best-ever pancake breakfast, 3,000 people and sausage. That was awesome. Okay. Next, apparently we have most of this as general fund, as you can see. That's just a humor slide for everybody. And the budget, 85% of our budget's in salaries, so it's tied up in there, so we don't have a lot of space to work with in there. So areas of focus and service delivery, I'll try to get through this quick. Levels of service, we're always trying to improve this, not just maintain, but improve. I've got to tell you this, I'm kind of excited, I was just finding this. When I first came in here, we are, it talks about reaction time, turnout time, noticed our turnout time was very low, I thought, and so we've made an emphasis to do, to get better at that, and so in October, it's almost a year, but October of 17, the stations, 42, 44, 45, their turnout times were 80 seconds, 82 seconds, and 89 seconds. Last, just this last month, in September, their turnout times were 68, 7 seconds, and 78, and 78. So a significant amount of saving in that time that we get to the people without spending a dime. It's just a matter of just being aware of that. It's just a matter of just being aware of that and getting them out the door. So we're working on that, we're going to work, we're also working on the whole travel time and the whole response time in general to get that down. But that right there is, you know, 10, 12 seconds that we saved getting out the barn. So that's, that's good. We've, we're looking at creating a mentorship program, succession plan, talk about that, it's crazy important, it's in our strategic plan. We've got two of our folks, Chief McDonald and Chief Johnson, are participating in a Seattle Fire Department Executive Leadership Academy, brand new, that's just starting up. And one of the things they have to take out of that is a, what do you call that? A capstone project kind of thing, and this could be one of them that they come out of there with. It's a year-long project, a year-long class they go through, and hopefully we come, something can come out of that. So regardless, we are working on that as part of the strategic plan. We're looking at, actually, I am very interested in looking at different ways of EMS delivery. It's kind of one of those things, just because we've always done it this way, doesn't mean it's the best way. And is there another way we can do it maybe more efficiently or cheaper or better for the citizens? So just because we've always had two EMTs on an aid car transporting 24/7, maybe there's something else we can look at. So just, just exploring that for the citizens and the council down the road, see how that goes. Residential sprinkler code adoption, Fire Marshal's working on that. That's going to come up to the council pretty quick here for an adoption. Working on a social media program, we just started a Twitter account, and we have 200 followers already. Yes, I know, exciting. And actually, that's kind of a cool thing, because I'm so old, I remember doing, for the media, press releases, oh my God. And they don't do those anymore, it's all Twitter. That's how the press finds out what's going on. So we are working with that, and we're not just doing it by ourselves, we're working with police so we can tie, I don't know how that even works, you tie them together, you can retweet, thank you. So anyway, that's going good. Kind of old. Fire Service Inspections, now there's two kinds of inspections, we talked about that before, there's permitted inspections with, that's the ones we charge for. We go out and like, if they have flammable liquids or hood and duck systems and that kind of thing. And then there's just the annual safety inspections that the crews do, and that's just making sure that there, there's not extension cords to the walls and that kind of stuff. So there's two different kinds. We are trying on both of those to get 100% compliance, to get through all our inspections each year. We're getting close, we're doing a pretty good job, we're making that a very, a big emphasis, and we're getting much, much better. And we are also trying to get to invoicing the 100% of the permitting fees, we're trying to recover actual costs. And we are looking at the fees too, we might be bringing that to you, to increase some of the fees based on actual recovery costs. Am I still, am I in still? Okay, Emerging Issues. Okay, real quick. So a standard of cover, that is essentially the next step, we've, a strategic plan is the first step, a standard of cover would be the second step in working towards accreditation, international accreditation. A standard of cover, extremely important, would really help me out a lot. It looks at your community risks and so response capabilities, and it shows you where your shortfalls are, and between that and where your outcomes could be. So it's a, it's a document that looks at all the issues, the risks we have in the community, you know, the station, it's kind of what we looked at here when we were looking at the stations and their placement, and it goes into more depth though, and it talks about your response capabilities, gets into automatic aid and all that kind of stuff. But that's something we're going to want to tackle at some point in the near future, I really want to do that. The next one would be accreditation, that's the gold standard. We have several departments here in the city that are accredited, this would be the big deal for fire. It's a long process, probably wouldn't, probably wouldn't even actually start or apply for this till 20 or 21. We'd get the standard of cover in place, start looking at accreditation, then move down that path, because that takes a while, it's a big lift to get that one done. But that's something we really want to start looking at. Blue Card Certification is a new thing, and sort of a new thing in the area, it's actually taken us by storm. Our neighbors in Snowmish County use it now, Kirkland's going to, Woodinville's going to it. It's really, it's a, it's a turnkey incident command communications training program. And we really don't have anything, we train our junior officers very well, but once you make, like a battalion chief, we really don't have a lot of command instruction, and this is, as I say, a turnkey, it's a great program, a little different than what we're used to, but not much, it's right in the same vein, follows a lot of the, all the rules. And so, so we are looking at that, actually, right now, we're, Chief McDonald, we're working madly on an AFG grant, the grant period's open, and we're trying to get a grant to get the initial training done on a grant. So that's our goal on that one. P CERN, police, I'm sure are going to touch on this because it impacts them a little bit more, but there is a vote in '15 to redo all our radio systems, bring it up for fire only because there's a few radio accessories that may not be covered on the P CERN, mostly everything for fire is covered. But there's a few things that we're going to have to come up with on that. WSRB, the Washington Survey Rating Bureau, I don't know the timeline, I would imagine within three years we'll be coming up on that. We're currently at three, we want to keep that, at least a three, I'd like to see if we can go up. Part of that, interestingly enough, is tied to accreditation, they're not, they're not tied to each other, but they do a lot of the same things, they look at a lot of the same areas. And if we, if we get working towards accreditation, that'll help in WSRB because we'll be doing some of that stuff already. So those kind of work together, I think they could be compatible. The FirstNet, the cellular network, we talked about this a little bit, this would be a huge impact for IS. It would affect, essentially what it is, it's a dedicated network, digital network for public safety. So Public Works would be involved, police, fire, but it would entail most likely switching the city over to AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T is the provider of this FirstNet right now. Verizon's trying to get in the game, long story, but we're just looking at it. We're evaluating, as people, as people around us go switch over, we're seeing how it works for them, and then we'll, we'll look at it down the road. And then we're looking at the fees and cost recovery, we are very aware of that. We're looking at things like our transport fee for the BLS, for the ambulance, increasing that, because we're falling way down on what our neighbors are doing, so we're looking at that, we'll come to you with some of that, impact fees, inspection fees, all that. We're looking at all our fees, make sure they are commensurate to what other folks are charging in the area. So some additional needs that are in the budget, we have an in-house fire mechanic, we talked about that, that's mostly, Public Works will cover that, I just wanted to bring it up, let you know it's very important. You see that there's a bullet here about Redmond proposing an increase of 44% in the budget. So it's really not that Redmond is really trying to mess with us, what happened was, is they just didn't raise their rates for five years, and so now they're just trying to catch up to market, which I get, but, so we were kind of, kind of getting a good deal on that, and now that we have to pay full freight, it kind of makes sense, we're looking at it, why don't we just get our own mechanic if that's the case? Because we didn't realize kind of the deal we were getting, actually. So that's, that's one of the things that's prompting this, we're going to be paying this money anyway, why not get someone? Because part of the issue too is we've got to ferry rigs back and forth to Redmond. They do a great job down there, they're awesome, but it takes time to do that, we have to use our people to do it, or pay a mechanic to do it. If we had it in-house, it'd save a lot of money on that end, so there's a lot of, a lot of good reasons to get a mechanic. And then we turn to the IS facility requests that are in the budget, we mentioned this before, the MDCs, the rigs, they're out of warranty, or hard to get parts for and work on them, they're very expensive. These were actually purchased by King County Fire District 10, they're the district we work with, we have a contract with for services. Through the years, they've purchased things for the fire department, and so, what's that?
Snow Ten.
What did I say, King Ten? I'm sorry. Yeah, Snow Ten, you're right, Snow Ten. And so what happened was, they purchased all these for us, it was awesome, but by doing that, we didn't put them in the asset replacement fund. And I'm talking to Jennifer about that, and you know, going forward, we obviously need to try to do a better job of that, because now it's biting us, and we have to pay $105,000 at one whack, as opposed to having, having this covered. So IS is working on that for us, that's awesome. The next one is another IS thing, it's not a big dollar issue, but it's a time and effort issue, I know it's a weigh-in on IS. We obviously help them out, we have the ESO program, we have that, the actual program now, so we're not purchasing the program, but there's a, and a fire inspection component of that program we're looking at getting, that would just help our inspectors in the field. The next one is a high-definition screen for Station 45, so we can do better tactics, command post training, and training that we're not able to do there currently. And then some unfunded things, just to finish up here, essentially, just the highlights on this page is, almost all of this is covered either in levy or the bond. So there are six firefighters in the levy, the aid cars in the levy, and the stations are through the bond. The two firefighters at the top were initially requested in the budget, but we know they're not going to make that cut. And then the other stuff, the last page, we've, we've talked about those in passing. Any question, I don't want, I'm really fast on that, but any questions, specific questions on anything?
So I've had the experience of working on essential facilities, and the fire stations, I'm sure, are essential facilities to our ability to respond to an emergency, to a major event, earthquake, whatever. How do you feel about the fire stations as they stand right now? I mean, obviously, there's a levy out to raise and rebuild two of them, but if we had a real, you know, serious earthquake here, how structurally safe and operational would our fire stations be?
The only one that it comes to mind, I know that I remember seeing, was Station 42 needs to get seismically out, retrofit it, they called that out. I don't recall, you guys recall 45s was on that? I think 45s might have been as well. But I know 42 was for sure, because they did some remodel, they closed the bay down and put that mezzanine, they covered that up, and that whole area is not good. So, yeah, that's the, that's probably the big part.
So you've had the seismic retrofits done, or?
We have not, no, 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 that was just, that was, it was one of those, that's when we, we did the remodel. Initially, we just did the whole rebuild, and then we went back to look at remodel, they said, okay, if we're going to, you know, remodel it, we've got to bring it up to code, bring up standards, and that was one of the things, the highlights that came out, was they, they saw that it was not seismically done, and that was a lot of work, frankly, Station 42, there was a lot of work needed.
And then, I don't know if I caught that correctly, you said that there, there's an increase in suicides, were you meaning increase in suicides amongst firefighters or increasing just in the general public?
I think the general population is going up, but specifically firefighters. It's an epidemic going on with them, and it's the military and firefighters. And so it's been an emphasis, the I A F F, the chiefs, they're all trying to stave this off, or do what we can to help our firefighters out. And we're talking about the stations a lot too, we didn't used to do that before, you know, it's just not the, you know, suck it up is a tough call, it's, you know, hey, let's talk about this, you need help, and we're really trying to open up, change the communication, get people to talk about it.
Thanks for sharing that.
Kind of related to what the mayor asked about, it seems to me, if I recall, that the number of hours that they work on a shift is excessive, do, does that have anything to do with their mental health, or do you think?
You know, I don't know if, it's hard to tell, I think it's more just the, with the calls they go on over time, the things they see, and it's person to person, you know, if you go on, if you don't have kids and you go on a small child injury, it may not affect you as much if you've got a child at home that same age, you know, that's that kind of stuff. So it's more of that. I think the shift is more of a, not sleep deprivation, but an ongoing, you know, just getting the rest, your circadian cycle gets all messed up, and over time, that's not good either, so.
I understand, like, in nursing, you know, they always have that, that three days on, and they work, you know, long hours, and then they get a few days off, but that is, it does bother your clock, your time clock in your head.
Right, and police to a similar fashion get affected when they switch them from shifts, because they, you know, we work 24-hour shifts, so at least we have an opportunity sometimes to get some sleep, but when they're, they're actually up working 12 hours and they flip that around, that's really tough, you know.
So I have, there's going to be, I have several questions on the budget request form, but I'm going to save that, I'll just do it offline with you.
Great, okay.
But I did want to ask on page 12, you, there's a thing here called CPR, AED, First Aid Classes for City Employees and Public. Is that something that the public pays for, or is that something that, I mean, how do you do the training for the public on that?
The public does pay for that, I don't know how the cost, I should have got that for you. The city one, we are currently doing that essentially for free for city employees, she does several of them a month, or a week, month?
Not in the city, she does probably one every couple, three months.
Okay.
She gathers many.
Yeah, she tries to get as many people there as she can for the city to make that pan out for her, but the public one, she does quite a bit, and they do pay for that. She does a CPR and a first aid class, I believe.
Okay, so the, they do that at 42, or?
Yes, most of them are 42.
For the outside businesses in Bothell, more often than not, she travels to them to teach the CPR.
Okay, well, I'd be curious to get more information on that, because there's quite a few youth programs around that are trying to get that training. If it's, I didn't know that the city of Bothell, because we've been going to Kenmore to get it, so.
Okay, I know, I know she does charge, I don't know if it's a sliding scale, it's a cost recovery thing, so when she charges for the public, it's, you know, covering her time, so we're not giving it away. But yeah, we could, we could certainly look at that. We're actually trying to expand that, because she's, Kirsten's really good at that, and she does a real good job, but she's getting, she's doing PIO stuff, she's getting pulled different directions, and so she didn't have a lot of time to do that, and so we're actually going to have a discussion about this pretty quick, about how, trying to get a firefighter or two lined up to do this like we used to do, because again, it's a self-covering benefit, you know, program, so we could pay for overtime and not be out money.
Yeah, and I think it's just a great way to also get involved with the community around youth, right?
Yeah.
A lot of the sports and stuff like that are trying to get involved, so it might be a way to reach out to the community.
Sure.
Have we looked into the Medic 2 program to see if they'll fund some of that?
I have not.
Because I think the Medic 2 program does fund CPR classes, and you just have to put in for it.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah.
So I had a couple of questions on the first budget page. So out-of-town travel expenses went up 725%, but it says funds reallocated within M and O to cover training needs, I'm not really sure what that means.
Okay, I am going to, I'm not quite pleading the fifth, but...
Sounds ominous.
So this is very new to me, and we had all our department directors and budget folks work on theirs and put it together, I've reviewed it, gone over it. I can get a better answer, I know training went through and moved a bunch of funds around. The one thing I can say in my own defense, if you look at the total, total cost or change, that budget item actually went down by 1%, that whole, the supplies total, and then services total went up by 1.7%. So they're in line with what we're trying to do as a city overall. Within the budget, I see it's a mess, yeah, some of those are up huge amounts, and it's because training was moving money around from monies they had budgeted into different accounts. So does that make sense? I can get you better, I will get you a better answer on that.
Okay. Yeah, and then when I look at the...
Oh, I guess Chief McDonald can speak to that a little bit.
Great.
Sure. So talking with Chief Johnson and training, one of the things that we had experienced over the past many years...
Sorry, but you might want to use the, just come up to the mic, because it's being recorded.
So over the last few years, we had a big reduction, where we weren't doing training, weren't sending people out to training, and it was very limited. And so we developed and we decided, hey, listen, we're missing out, where people aren't getting those training classes they need, a lot of those training classes are not local. We have to send them to Eastern Washington, we have to send them to California, that's just where those classes are, whether they're hazmat, technical rescue trench. And so if we can get them locally, we will. We were talking about blue card earlier, I'm an instructor, that's a $6,500 budgeted training thing I'm bringing to Bothell that we won't necessarily have to go out and get four, we can stick with three as we, as we build this program out. So, but with training, that's where we went from literally a zero-based outside training over the last seven, eight years, and then we've, we've started to ramp up over the last two, three years, we're ramping that training up because we had gone so long without that. So I talked with Chief Johnson, he did have to move some training out of tech rescue, out of other things to help with that, out of, out of state or out of the area trans,
out of other things to help with that, out of, out of state or out of the area trans, or training. But that's, that's the information I have right now, but kind of give you some background to why we've had such a big increase.
Okay, thanks. And then I was looking at, so I'm trying to get the net net on the, moving the apparatus maintenance in-house. So in one line, it says a decrease of $93,000, but then in another line, it looks like it's equipment rental. So we would subtract, subtract that. What, I guess I'm not quite understanding, because it says fire fleet maintenance in-house.
We're going to bring that back to you. So it's one of the discussions of, between Public Works and Fire, of how we can better maintain the fleet. One of the challenges we've had is we've only had two mechanics on staff for years, and our fleet just, we add, and we add, and we add. And so we have a, we have a shortage, and we're struggling in being able to maintain the fleet that we have. So the strategy is, if the council's interested in bringing fire apparatus maintenance in-house, Public Works has proposed a strategy. So we'd like you to see both sides of that, and then as part of the final presentation about decision-making, we're going to show you, there is a cost increase actually to our proposal, but there are benefits, until you'll be able to see both.
Okay, yeah, because it's hard to tell what the net...
Because you're only seeing part of it.
Yeah, okay. And then the interfund self-insurance, so that's, that went up 146%, and it says premium increases expanded safety program. So is it the premium increases that is causing the rise in cost, or the expanded safety program?
Both. So the safety program is allocated between all the departments, so we have this, we have this new safety program that we've never had before, and it's based on, I believe, number of employees. So we distribute it, so it's a larger department. And then the, the other part is their increase in premiums.
And then, I, this might not be the venue to talk about it, but I was a little surprised at the residential sprinklers. Do it, when is that supposed to come to us? The reason I ask is because it came up a couple of years ago, and nobody was interested, and so now it's here, and so I'm just a little, I'm just, I hadn't expected that. And so I'm going to have questions about what's that going to do to house prices and that sort of thing, because I think that was a big piece of why we weren't interested the last time it came up, so.
Did you want to hear about that now? I'm sure he's going to bring that up when he brings it up.
There'll be a full presentation.
Yeah, I don't want to, yeah, I just want to give, to give you a heads up that I'm going to have those questions.
Well, I'm sure he's aware.
Okay, thanks. I think that's it.
Sorry, Aaron. Public Works always gets the short end of the deal.
You just have to promise that we get to go first on the 16.